Good evening. The regular council meeting for September 21st, 2017 is called to order at 7:30 PM. Madam Clerk, pledge please.
(inaudible) 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 I'd like to ask for a motion to amend the agenda to add a resolution 2017-19 as number two under resolutions to accept the DOTD TAP grant for streetscaping. Ms. Lulu, do you have copies of that?
(inaudible)
They were already given out? Can I?
(inaudible)
Oh, it's number 20, sorry. Can I have a motion, please?
A motion.
I have a motion. My Councilman Benton, seconded by Councilman Bodie, all in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? We have five yays, zero nays. The agenda is amended. Councilman Wheeler, do you have a motion to amend the agenda as well?
(inaudible) Yes, I'm sorry. Well, you want to put it up under new business?
Yes, it's going to be number four under new business.
Okay. It's the Harahan Athletic Association temporary liquor permit for their jambalaya cook-off on Saturday, November 4th, from 12 to 5.
Can I just clarify on your email? You said to get a temporary permit or is it just to sell?
It's to sell beer only. I clarified that with Jimmy Dunehopper.
I was just told just the temporary liquor permit. I think it's just for the event.
Beer only.
Oh, beer only.
For the event, yep. To sell, correct. All right. I have a motion by Councilman Wheeler to add that as number four under new business. Do I have a second? Councilman Hewitt, all in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? We have five yays, zero nays. The agenda is amended. Recently, we were spared the ravages of Hurricane Harvey and Irma. Puerto Rico has just experienced the devastating effects of Hurricane Maria. While we were fortunate here in Harahan, I would like everyone to keep those affected in their thoughts and their prayers and to be as generous as possible to the victims of those hurricanes in those devastating areas. Also, our neighbors to the south in Mexico experienced horrific earthquake. So, we have a lot of people in this community who have loved ones in all of those areas affected. We have people that are, who have left the city to go and help family and friends. So, let's do what we can. Ms. Darlene Schwartz will be announcing, under special presentations, a site in order to drop off goods. During Hurricane Harvey, I'm also proud to report that our city emergency management team, along with Jefferson Parish, successfully worked together to ensure our community remained safe. I'd like to extend a special thanks to all departments, both chiefs, and to all our employees who worked cohesively to accomplish our state of readiness. Chief Todd St. Seer of the Fire Department, I wish he was here, I'll reiterate when I see him, acted as the point of contact to disseminate and receive all information in a very timely manner. Another special thanks I want to say to our very small but efficient team of four in maintenance who manned the streets during the events to make sure that they could contribute to the clearing of any roadways, ditches, et cetera. They were wonderful. We'd also like to say thank you to the DOTD with the state, that's the Department of Transportation, and Jefferson Parish for their assistance during the storm. Additional drains and ditches were cleaned and problem areas were addressed. The city has been and will continue to be aggressive to address our drainage issues, in particular, those under the auspices of Jefferson Parish and the state with DOTD. Those areas that fall under their jurisdiction are mainly Riverside Drive, Jefferson Highway, and Hickory. The city also filmed the most problematic areas of drainage during Hurricane Harvey and then sent it to the proper authorities to provide them that documentation during a real live event. During Harvey, also, the city and Jefferson Parish got to experience the effects of the pump to the river being used for the first time. Anecdotal accounts from our residents seem to imply that there was great success with pump to the river. I went and talked to residents who routinely have water nearing their doors and just about the time the pumps went on, they saw that recede. Tonight, I've asked the Army Corps of Engineers, Mr. Durand Elzy is here with the Army Corps to give us a little update on that issue as well. Another thing that the Corps is going to be reporting on tonight, as we all know that we have been anxiously waiting for the permit to be approved to move the haul road for woods material. We have been in constant contact with the Army Corps. So, anytime that process would slow down, we'd talk and it'd get nudged along again and again. I am happy to report, the permit is complete. Now, it is up to woods material to start construction and hopefully, our residents will have some relief and some satisfaction very soon. So, that's a major, major accomplishment. Further on that note, on September 6th, City Attorney Gilbert Bures presented the city's case in Woods Materials versus the City of Harahan at the Fifth Circuit Court of Appeals concerning the illegal composting and mulching operation on the Badger. I'd like to thank Mr. Bures for his expert representation to the city in this manner. I'll say this.[425.21][425.21](applause) We had residents who attended. We also had representatives from the parish and the Levy District. It was an honor to watch him artfully apply his craft. We are very fortunate to have you. Again, thank you. Some good news for the good news. This year, I'd like to talk about what we've received in grants. This year, we have federally funded grant between FEMA and Louisiana Pre-Disaster Mitigation Program totaling $700,000 to the city, which also requires 25% matching funds. This week, the city just received notice that we have also received a grant through the Department of Transportation, their TAP grant, for the program of 2016 through 2018 for nearly $340,000 with a 20% match. So, in one year, in 2017, the city has received, accepting and being allowed to have over a million dollars' worth of grant work within the city. This is a wonderful event for the city. It's very good news. That amount of money is, represents 1/5 to 1/6 of our entire budget. As you can see, also, on the city agenda, we have Calvin Hartmeyer, the city engineer, who'll be giving us an update on the very urgent sewer repair that we had done for Lift Station 8, how it's beginning and where we will be going on from there. Earlier this week, I'd also like to report that I met with Councilman Paul Johnston to discuss projects in the city that require attention and to seek his assistance and his interest and input. Particularly, we discussed the street work required on Prados, Keelman, VFW, and Marquette. The city council had authorized the project to be broken up over three years. And as such, that's wonderful for those, the people who live in that area, but also, it tends to have a lot of inconvenience and does run up cost. The councilman has agreed to meet with city representatives, with me, the city engineer himself, and his, the people he chooses from Jefferson Parish, to see how they can help and maybe try and manage to do this project in one fell swoop. So, as we know more, I'll let everyone get an update. So, we'll see what we can work out and hopefully, we'll have good news on that front. I'd also like to remind the citizens that October 14th will be a millage election for our sewer district, which will authorize the collection of three mills. That collection will bring in, if it's approved, $256,000. I'd like to encourage everyone to exercise your right to vote. Special presentations.
Mr. Durand Elzy, Deputy District Engineer.
Hello, how are you? We're going to loan you a microphone. Thank you for coming in today.
No problem. Thank you, on behalf of Colonel Clancy. He apologizes for not being able to make it tonight, but he wanted to send his regards. Just wanted to provide a quick update on Harahan Pump to the River. The project was broken up into six contracts. We have successfully completed all of the contracts. We have one outstanding contract that's open with a couple punchless items that we're currently working. As the mayor highlighted, we were able to operate the system during Harvey. It operated successful. There are a couple minor things that we'll be tweaking, but we've actually handed it over to the non-federal sponsor. So, the system is fully operable at this particular point. So, this is good news. It's been a long time coming. I know you guys have waited for some time on this. So, it marks a major milestone for the Jefferson Parish SEALA project.
Mr. Elzy, we were, the city had received some communication between the Corps and Jefferson Parish.
Correct.
I believe, if you would clarify those correspondence about the final...
Correct. So, what we do upon completion of a construction project, we issue what we call a notice of construction completion. That's sent out to the non-federal sponsor and all interested stakeholders. The parish responded back citing a couple things they wanted us to take a look at. We're closely coordinating with them. It does not impact the operation of the system, but there are a few minor punchless items, no different if you're building a brand-new house, you do a quick walkthrough to a couple things you may point out that you'd like the contractor to address. So, that's in essence what we're doing for this particular job. No major impact on the operation of the system, though.
How much of the pump was actually functioning?
Don't have those numbers offhand.
I'm sorry.
But what I can tell you is that I know they switched the pump on. The pump did not run very long. We ended up having to shut it off because there just wasn't enough flow in there to keep the pumps operable. I don't know the exact volume of water that was running through there, so.
We had some, the Fire Department had the pleasure of watching the water be pumped out of the pump and actually saw all the turtles that were being caught up in that system. So, they had some interesting, well, no, alive. They were fine. They got fined through the, no damage, no harm.
Yeah, and also, as you highlighted, for woods material, that permit has been proffered.
Is there an expiration on that permit?
The permit is valid for five years. After that, they would have to come in and reapply for additional permit.
Okay.
That's all that I have, is subject to any question that you may have or the council may have.
We just thank you for your time. We really appreciate the update.
Can I just say thank you to the Corps of Engineers for getting that permit through? Thank you so very much, okay? The residents of here truly need that real quick move and to go along the network. So, thank y'all, just send our thanks.
I think that deserves a...[861.69][861.69](applause) It's been a very big community effort and a very much...
All right, thank you.
All right. Calvin Hartmeyer, City Engineer.
Last week, we had the pump station, Nate, that we've talked about before, the T became more stressed, created a larger leak, so much so that we had a pump in the dry pit to try to keep the dry pit drier. And in that process, we decided it was important to put in the emergency bypass operation. This involved taking out a section of the pipe, installing a couple of valves, a T, and allowing us to disconnect the pump station from the fourth main and completely bypass the station so that it can be repaired. That is the way the station is today. The bypass T has been installed. They have a 12-inch pump, portable bypass pump, on-site. As it stands this second, I think we are back in operation using the pump station itself, keeping the 12-inch pump in standby. There are three pumps in that station. Currently, only one of them is operational. Veolia has also done some Band-Aid repairs to the T, so it is no longer leaking, but is still subject to failure. So, we are in a position today that should it fail, we can turn on Pump Station 8 using the bypass pump and remain operational. There was work done over at midnight, 11 to 5:00 in the morning, so that we were on the low-flow time. While pumps weren't running throughout the city, there was no case that I'm aware of that we had any backflow into anyone's homes associated with that operation. This afternoon, I did receive the 90% plans from our design team of Ames Group for the next phase of this, which is repairing the valves and replacing the T and other items within Pump Station 8. We should be able to bid that project in the next 30 days. Now, we've got a little time on our hands. The road will probably remain rocked as it is, but will be concreted or asphalted in as part of the final operation of that pump station repair. So, that is probably two to three months in duration. A month's worth of bidding, about eight weeks for delivery of that T after the project's awarded. So, we're eight to 12 weeks' worth of construction after 30 days' worth of advertisement. So, we're probably by the end of the year have that operational.
Mr. Hartmeyer, would you mind just reiterating why that particular pump station is so critical?
Pump Station 8 is the Keystone Pump Station in the city. It pumps 90% of the flow of everything south of it. There are two pump stations to the north along Hickory Corridor that pump into the same fourth main and go to the plant. We are also beginning the design of Pump Station 6, which will reroute flow out of 8. So, then we'll have 6 in 8 as pumping that 90% will have some backup built in. Again, that was based on previous direction from the council. We're now moving forward with Pump Station 6 as part of the loan program. The manhole project is complete and then the gravity sewer repairs are ongoing. We've probably got another six or nine months of pipe repair work going on there. The repair cost currently projected under $75,000, which was within what I told you before. And the current design estimate on Pump Station 8 repairs is 150 to 175, so we're still on track with those numbers as previously discussed.
Mr. Calvin, you mentioned backflow into people's homes, but I know that I've received an email over this past month about a resident that came home and said their entire house is, you know...
I have, if, we're talking about...
And then they had another one's past weekend.
Tyler.
Tyler.
Yeah, I'm aware of that one.
Then they had another one this past weekend in Harahan Oaks.
Okay. I did not see that one. I did see the one on Tyler, did hear about the one on Tyler. I did talk with Edwin. I thought he was, he should be working with Veolia and Blue Flash to do a clean-out or fix that connection. I don't have a status update on that, but that was while it occurred. It did not occur when we shut everybody off.
Right.
We still have individual laterals get clogged. Sometimes it's the cities, on the city side, and sometimes it's not. And we have to work our way through, one, getting it unclogged, two, figuring out whose fault it is, or whose nickel it's on, let's phrase it that way. It's not really a fault, it's mostly, it happened. And whether it's on private property or on public property is, then becomes who pays for it.
So, let me ask you this question, whether it's on private property or public property, say if it's a, say if it's a break or something that actually is right on the line, when somehow or another finds its way backwards into the residence home, because that's kind of the story.
If it's right on the line, I would always fault to the city, taking care of it. Because you said, that's too close to call and I'm not here to, you know, split those kind of hairs. If it's at their, you know, at their house connection, right outside of their house, it's theirs. It's inside their house, it's theirs. At the street line, it's ours. That gray area in between, it's not all that gray when it's five feet from the house. It is a lot grayer when it's five feet from the street. I don't have a problem recommending paying for those items that are that close to the street, that close to our system, especially in backyards. We have a number of areas that have rear lot sewer systems. That was chosen at the time as the most economical. It was great to put in. It's a nightmare to fix. Getting back to them is very problematic. And there are sheds, there are fences, there are all kinds of things that just raise the cost of that repair. We're working through those issues now as part of this sewer repair program, because we do have a number of properties along Wilson that are being repaired and on, you know, on both sides of Wilson.
I've seen that firsthand on Wilson.
Yeah. And it's, it's an ongoing issue and we're trying to stay on top of it as best we can. But, yeah, it's, I'm not going to get that, it's $1,000. It's $1,000 the city doesn't have, but it's $1,000 I know the resident doesn't have.
Right.
So, it's, I don't say I fix all of them and I'll get them all right all the time, but we're trying to do the best we can.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I'd like to just thank you again. You're always answering all our phone calls and running out to see residents and locations.
Not a problem.
Thank you, Calvin. Darlene Schwartz, our community liaison. Hi, Darlene.
Good evening, everybody. So, I've got a number of things to talk about tonight. Bear with me. Here I go. So, hello to everybody.
Hi.
Hi. Faith Lutheran School is having their annual trunk or treat. I always call it all kinds of stuff, but it's trunk or treat. And that's going to take place Saturday, October 21st, from noon to 3:00 PM. Look, this is a nice little event. Y'all need to go. They're going to have food, music, these interactive blow-up things for the kids to jump around in, 15 bucks, as much as they want for three hours. You can wear them out and then they go home and take a nap. Confetti eggs, nachos, it's a good time. Saturday, October 21st, from noon to 3:00 at Faith Lutheran School, right there on Colonial Club. And I'm going to put some of these flyers out so y'all can pick one up and not have to remember it. Realana, y'all all familiar with that, for those of you that like to shop and spend money, that's getting ready to open up September 24th to September 30th at Colonial Shopping Center, where the Dollar General is, a little bit further back near where the O'Wendixy used to be. Great, great deals. Christmas is coming, great clothing items, toys. Lady by the name of Rebecca runs it, and she's got some awesome deals for kids' clothing, toys, all sorts of stuff, top-notch stuff. So, furniture, all kinds of things. So, if you have kids, grandkids, want to get an early jump on Christmas, this is the place to go, and I will have some cards out back for this also. Again, and then Early Bird, if you have this card, is going to be on September 23rd, starting at 7:00 PM. Got it? Some good deals, so make sure you get in on that. National Prescription Drug Takeback Day, again, is going to be on Saturday, October 28th. We're going to do the Rite Aid Pharmacy, we're going to do the Harahan Police Department's lobby once again. We did Phenomenal the last time, it's been six months. I don't care if we collect one pill or 100,000 pills, let's get it where it needs to be to get it destroyed. We usually start 10:00 in the morning to 2:00 in the afternoon. Quick story, bear with me. Reference this. When Penny Mae Cormaney died in Utah, her family sang Mormon hymns, "Befill My Soul" and lowered her small coffin into the earth, the latest victim of a drug epidemic that has now taken 60,000 lives a year. Penny was just one years old. Increasingly, parents and the police are encountering toddlers and young children unconscious or dead after consuming an adult's opioids. Number of other informational things. Philadelphia, a nine-month-old rolled onto a needle while in bed with her father. A two-year-old swallowed OxyContin pills he found in a purse that was on his mother's bed. Another infant got sick from fentanyl that was laced with heroin that traveled through the air that the infant inhaled and died. This is serious stuff. I know I kind of joke around sometimes, and we all think bad things can't happen to us. It always happens to other people. But please, get rid of the drugs. This is a great opportunity to do it. Drop the stuff off, no questions asked. Again, that's Saturday, October 28th, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, Rite Aid Pharmacy parking lot up the road there in Harahan or at the Police Department lobby, no questions asked. And then last, and I've got some flyers for this, too. We have a resident, Ms. Michelle Lane, who is a victim of Parkinson's disease for 17 years. She asked me to make this announcement because she has difficulty in speaking and getting around. So, Louisiana Walks for Parkinson's started in 2012, again, after successful events in 2003, '04, and '05. This is going to take place October 14th, which is also a Saturday, at LaFreniere Park, Pavilion Island, 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Registration's 25 bucks, kids 12 and under are free. Registration begins 9:00, the walk starts at 10:30. They're going to have food donated by over 15 local restaurants, water, soft drinks, tea, lemonade, beer, and wine. There you go. The Midnight Special Band is going to play from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. They're going to have Kids Corner with face painting, balloons, et cetera. Bottom line, it's an event for a very, very worthy cause, but you can also go and kind of have some fun with the kids and everything. So, again, that's Saturday, October 14th, 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM at Pavilion Island, LaFreniere Park.
I'd also like to take this opportunity to extend an invitation to my fellow elected officials, our council and police chiefs, that we can do this maybe together to show community support for a resident, and we'll send out an email and see who wants to participate and maybe do that as a group.
Now, that would be really nice. That would be really nice. She's a really nice lady. She's a super lady, very involved in all sorts of things, and just, just a great person. What am I missing? Night Out Against Crime, Tuesday, October 17th. We're going to do St. Rita again. We'll have music, free food, free. So, we're good. And it's a good time for those of you who have attended before. We have a lot of display tables with all sorts of different agencies that come out, and it's just another, another really good time, great event. East Jefferson Levy District is one of the agencies that participates, so please come join us for that.
Six to eight or something?
Six to eight, good thing. Usually runs from about 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And then, last but not least, the mayor made the announcement about hurricane victims. It seems like all over the place. We've been very, very fortunate. 6901 Jefferson Highway, which is over by my sister's table, they've had a collection point that's been set up for a little bit. Either there, you can drop by City Hall and make any donation, and we'll make sure it gets mailed forward. I've been in touch with Rockport Police Department in Texas, and their town was like totally, totally messed up. UPS is still not doing deliveries over there because it's too dangerous, but the post office is. And so, I've been trying to get organized and try to get some things together for those, those citizens over there. So, give us a call at City Hall, let us know if you... Let us know if you can't remember any of this. We're going to have information out on the table in the lobby area there. Or just give us a shout and we'll be happy to answer anything.
Ms. Judy.
And I'll ask, I'll ask the city clerk, excuse me mayor, maybe to send an email message out to the council and the mayor so y'all have all this in writing and...
I was just going to ask, since Ms. Judy takes the minutes, if that she would just send an email with all the dates of all the events so that we can put it on the community calendar for the website.
Oh, that's a good idea. Okay, great. Thank you all for your attention. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Police Chief Walker.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, viewing public. First of all, we have a few presentations to make. First one, reason I bring it to light is on September 11th, around one o'clock in the afternoon, we started getting calls about a suspicious person jumping fences on Gordon and then also on Roseland Parkway. Then he appeared on Jefferson Highway and was later apprehended on Norton. He had meth on him and he also had a gun. He was a convicted felon in possession of a firearm. People say things can't happen in Harahan. They do. But the point I want to stress is we kept getting calls. And I want to thank you, the public, for calling us, keeping us abreast where this gentleman was as he went through the city. With that, I want to make a presentation to East Jefferson Levy District Officer Arthur Eggs. Come on up. Don't be bashful. You want to bring your supervisors up? Y'all can come up too.
Mike?
Right.
We also had two Harahan Police Officers involved, Sergeant Craveta and Officer Todd Usee. They couldn't make it tonight. But it's the kind of cooperation that we have between the Levy District and Jefferson Parish Sheriff's Office, day in and day out. We all work off the same radio channel, which is the Jefferson Parish Sheriff's Office Dispatch. And I can't say enough about East Jefferson Levy District, about Jefferson Parish Sheriff's Office, the cooperation that we have with our department, working together to help keep you, the citizens of Harahan, safe. And I can't thank you guys enough. Also, back last year, during the August flooding in Baton Rouge, we were called to assist with search and rescue. And we have an old Army truck from probably 1970s. It's a five-ton. And our officers wanted to go. And I had some hesitation. It's 1970 model, to go to Baton Rouge if it breaks down, how we can get it towed back? Can we afford it? And the guy said, "We guarantee you, chief, it's going to run." Well, we had a crew that went up there that Saturday and they did so well with the search and rescue with our old equipment that they asked us to go back the next day, Sunday and Monday. Some of the new equipment is electronic that some of the other departments have from the government. And guess what? Electronics, they went out. So this old truck is one of the ones in the back, runs like a charm. We have certificates from the Fire Marshal, Butch Browning, and also the Governor, John Edwards, for a number of people that went those two days to Baton Rouge to assist with the search and rescue. I'll call them up. Captain Leo Savoy. Captain Savoy is in charge of our Reserve Section. I can't say enough about, about what he and his 28, 29 reserves do for us on a regular basis. Ashley Underwood, he's not here today. Dave Darwin, he's not here today. Dave Snyder. Wait, don't go off gas. Wesley West is here tonight. Thomas Bronken, no, he's not here tonight. Captain Adams, no, he's here tonight. Sergeant Duane Avenc, he's not in tonight. David Duthu, he's not here, okay. Paul Moreno. Special thanks to Paul. One of the reasons these two old Army trucks run is because of Paul servicing them on a regular basis for us, had no choice. He's part of our Reserve Section and he's the one that maintains them for us. And we can't thank you enough. You know, for the last almost year now, we've been asking the Police Department to have access to ENCODE, which is the software program that does the financials for the city of Harahan. And the mayor keeps saying, "We're going to look into it, we're going to look into it, we're going to look into it." So at the last meeting, Mayor Mazzelli said, "Come on by and we'll take care of it." So I took her up on all of this. Friday, August 18th, I sent an email to the mayor asking when Ms. Whittle, my secretary, and myself can meet with her and Ms. Lulu. Next day, I get a mayor, an email from the mayor saying, "We need to meet alone." I wrote back to her and said, "Mayor, I've told you numerous times, I will not meet with you alone, but I would like to meet with you and take you up on your offer about seeing us getting all the financials." Public record anyway, nothing to hide or shouldn't be. And if there's anything else that you want to talk to us about, please let me know. Well, I've had no response in regards to that. So I guess there's going to be no transparency and we're not going to get access to ENCODE with the financials. Then it gets better, folks. August 24th, one of my supervisors gets information that the next morning, Friday, the 25th of August, there's going to be a meeting at Jefferson Parish Emergency Management in regards to Hurricane Harvey preparations for the parish, including all the different departments within the parish, both police, fire, and EMS. The next morning, I called EMS, Emergency Management, the next morning and talked to one of the contacts and I said, "Yes, there's a meeting at 10:00." I take one of my supervisors to the meeting, only to find out that the mayor is on a conference call at City Hall with the other departments, the other directors, listening to the meeting. For some reason, I wasn't invited. We did meet with the mayor. She contacted me as we're leaving Emergency Management, that we had to get together with Fire Chief St. Seer. And later that afternoon, my staff, myself, met with the mayor, Chief St. Seer, and Mr. Pretlow of our Emergency Management Director. Another problem that we...
Chief, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Mayor, can you, I mean, is there any reason why the chief would not be involved with something like that?
I'll comment after.
Of course you will.
We sure.
Well, we can address it. Wait, chief.
No.
It's not going to happen.
It's his presentation.
Keep your pen out.
Oh, I...
We, we use communications on the internet on a daily basis with Jefferson Parish Sheriff's Office on different programs that they use, which helps our offices to help keep you safe. Checking on people that are wanted, license information, license plate recognition, investigative aids. Also, we use these internet services for our report writing. And it's two different internet connections. And they've been slow in speed, bandwidth. And a couple of days ago, we got information from Jefferson Parish that they're doing some upgrades and we're basically have to increase our bandwidth in order to work at a different speed. We're having some problems even communicating over the internet. Again, this is our lifeline. This is our communication, getting the information that our offices need on a daily basis. So we went to Cox and they gave us the quotes for the two. And the mayor's supposed to sign contracts. I submitted them to the mayor and the mayor basically said, "Well, you can submit them into the October meeting for a budget amendment with the city council. That'll be first reading. Then November, they can vote on it and then you can take it, I guess, have it if it's passed in November." We only got the contract for three months. It expires in December because we have a new budget coming in in January next year. So, Mayor, I may ask you, will you sign these two contracts tonight?
I'll address you after.
If you're not going to sign them, I'm going to sign them because we need it. It's definitely something we need to operate the Police Department. I'm not putting our citizen at risk and I'm definitely not putting our officers at risk anymore for some of your shenanigans. Will you sign these contracts?
I'll address you when you're finished, sir.
What have gone into last year, at the end, well, during the year last year, we have a finance director that does our financials. First time I got a finance report last year was in October of 16. Then only went through July. Says, "Look at your checkbook. You have no idea where you're at." And the mayor believes if there's any money in your account come December 31st at the close of business, it's ours. So I didn't get my next financial until March of this year. We felt we had at least $161,000 in our account. And we talked to the auditors and they told us we could transfer the money from last year Police Department 16 operating budget to 17 Police Department capital. An ordinance was written. The mayor contacted, after the pass, she contacted me and said, "It's done incorrectly. I'm going to veto it with your permission and we rewrite it." I said in an email and also verbally to her on the phone and one of the auditors, "If the money comes out of leftover 16 operating Police Department budget and goes into 17 capital budget for the Police Department, I'm fine with it." So she vetoed it. Well, the budget amendment or the ordinance that was presented was coming out of the city of Harahan capital, nothing like we discussed. It's okay. So we still felt we had money coming back. And it leads into where I talk about some cars that I'd ordered. We figured we had anywhere less than $161,000. Well, the audit went back and forth. When the audit came out, the auditor says we have a deficit of $66,000 for the Police Department in 2016. We put together a package from documents, meaning an ordinance, proposed ordinance by the mayor with the mayor's figures in them, and emails from our city finance director. And the next day, the city auditors came back and said, "No, you're $91,000." Then the city finance director, Ms. Lulu, she stated in two separate emails, you're either $75,000 under budget last year or $79,000 under budget. Well, in the meantime, with some of the shenanigans that was going on, I filed a complaint with Louisiana Licensing Board for CPAs against Ms. Lulu, our finance director, and one of the auditors. So to say they're not happy with me, that it's put in mildly. So guess what? The audit goes through and we still $66,000 over budget. It's still being investigated. But I figured we had the money coming in originally. It was promised and I ordered cars. For me, for Councilman Paul Johnson, the last, I think, eight police cars this city has received has been from funds from Jefferson Parish from Councilman Johnson. There are two laws. There's a city ordinance dealing with appearance bonds and there's a state law dealing with appearance bonds, that the Police Department should get $15 for the tickets that are written and goes through our court. We have received none of that money since I've been here, May of '14. In fact, I don't know if they even collect it anymore. If they are, I have no idea where it's gone, but it's not going to the Police Department. And when the ordinance was originally originated by the city council, it was to provide money for the Police Department to buy about two new cars each year. So anyway, going back when I came in in '14, we had a Chevy Caprice. Ford quit making the Crown Vix, which was an ideal car for police work. They discontinued them. Most of our fleet is Crown Vix. And I go back to 2006, 2008, 100-plus thousand miles these officers ride in around the clock. We have 16 positions in patrol and I figure with the money that Paul gave me last, end of last year, beginning this year, $180,000, I could complete the fleet along with the money I thought I was getting back from leftover from last year. So I ordered eight and they're coming in shortly from a local dealership. Then I found two in Texas and we picked them up last week. I put in a request for payment through City Hall and they denied it. You don't have money in the funds. And it just keeps going back and forth, folks, back and forth. It puts you at risk, puts my officers at risk. I'm sure there'll be an explanation for why it's not being done. Prior to my taking office, we have two retired drug enforcement agents that the city hired. They assigned to DEA and they work on drug cases. And you've probably heard the word asset forfeiture. This happens all over the country. DEA nationwide does not have enough personnel to handle drug cases in every jurisdiction. So what they do is they take local policemen, local sheriff's deputies, state police, and they assign them with DEA agents. And when they make cases and they recover either property or monies, the officers involved get a portion of that money for their department. So when I took office, we have two accounts for asset forfeiture. The mayor had the accounts. She had the checkbooks. And something happened, wasn't happy with me, September 2016. "Chief, you take the checkbooks back." So I took the checkbooks back. We've got three of our personnel on the checkbooks. At least two of us have to sign and order to write a check out of it for checks and balances in the system. Then I get an email the other day from the mayor that apparently she's doing her legal work again and finds a Attorney General's opinion that she's supposed to have the checkbooks. So it also says in there about the Doyle case, where the police chief in Harahan has total control of his budget. But that doesn't seem to apply here. Health insurance. Ms. Lulu, did we ever get the 21? That's another thing. Open enrollment in June of this year for health insurance for employees. My secretary was allowed to see the enrollment of police personnel. To help them if they had a problem enrolling, she could help them out. While my secretary's going through the list, we discover four former employees, they'd been paying health insurance premiums to the tune of over $21,000 out of the Police Department budget. And you're going to say, "Well, maybe you didn't notify City Hall." Well, at time frame, nobody got a paycheck, so apparently we notified them, but they still took out health insurance premiums. Was the $21,000 returned, Ms. Lulu?
Thank you. Yes, it was returned over two months. Everybody's, the amount we had to pay was decreased. I mean, it wasn't returned, we just paid less.
How much was?
I have to look at the exact figure.
Do you have your computer with you? Wait, we paying $105 an hour to sit here and do financials and you can't tell me how much money was returned from the insurance company? Was it put back?
I think we don't have to disparage.
This goes on every meeting. I can never get any information. When I speak to Ms. Lulu, I pay $105 out of my budget.
I just think you can be respectful, chief.
I am being respectful.
That's all.
Okay. Did the money go back to the Police Department budget, Ms. Lulu?
Yes.
Okay. For 17?
Into 17.
All of it?
All of it.
Okay. All right. Health insurance for everybody is going up at a drastic rate. During this open enrollment, the agent, it's nobody's fault, I'm not blaming anybody, but it's the way it is. We told my insurance agent in two or three years, our employees primarily are going to be paying for health insurance just to work here. There's not going to be anything to take home. Our officers take home $18,000, $19,000 a year. I don't know how they manage it. Our overtime and our details are limited. So what I was proposing, would you have an objection, Mayor, if I took that $21,000 and used it to pay towards my employees' insurance this year? Is that possible? It's not possible.
I didn't say that, chief. I'll address you when we're done.
Okay. Just like we're going to meet and see about ENCODE, right?
Well, if the money's been reallocated to your budget, we'll just move it.
I think we have a lot of budget problems that we should discuss.
If it's going back into your, the Police Department's 2017 budget, once it, you can't get there without identifying where it's going to go, right?
You can't treat employees differently.
I was just going to say, I'm Gil. I don't think we can just give the Police Department a lower rate to pay on their own individual health insurance, but the Fire Department has to pay at a different rate.
It's again...
So it's not a refund? What is it? Is it a refund?
Because if it's a refund, it's going back to the general.
Right. It's a refund.
It was payments that were taken out of the Police Department budget over the last year to pay premiums for former employees. And apparently the insurance company gave back part, if not all of it. And apparently, the insurance company gave back part, if not all of it.
Does it go back to the Police Department?
Well, I understand, but just to kind of reiterate what everyone said, the mayor called it a refund. To me, a refund is I'm gonna get a lump sum of money back that was incorrectly taken or a rebate or something, right? But Ms. Lulu said is that it wasn't a refund. They decreased the premium over two months. Therefore, you got your money back because you had to pay less premium over two months. So which is it? I don't know.
That was the one.
That one's correct.
The department doesn't buy its own insurance. Is this one policy that covers all city employees? And how is that paid for? Does the council appropriate the one lump sum by the insurance policy for all city employees?
I don't know.
Each department has a line item for health insurance.
Yeah, but each department is fictitiously given a portion part of what...
Actually, they take real dollars.
But when the council appropriated the money to pay the premium, it went to someplace in the budget, right?
Right.
It wasn't exclusive to the Police Department?
No, they, on the paychecks, the employee pays their portion, and that goes into the payable. And then when we pay the bill, the payable portion comes out, and then we pay the rest of it for each department, and each department gets their piece of the expense.
What I understand the police chief saying is that he paid premium out of that line for the Police Department for four police officers who are no longer here. Therefore, he should not have been deducted that out of that line, and it should go back there, right?
Yeah, well, it's a matter of, you know, how you move the money around.
And predating all of this on the fact that I don't know exactly what this budget looked like, but my appreciation of this is that when you guys appropriated the money, it was to buy the policy for all city employees. The chief is saying I should get a credit for the fact that I had a bunch of people leave, and so, you know, your premium went down. But that could happen in any department. It would be a complete nightmare to start doing that all over city government. Every time one agency loses some employees, oh, I'm due a credit. This is all a general fund kind of obligation. It's a general fund obligation to buy health insurance for your municipality. So I think the money technically needs to go back to where it came from, which was a line item appropriation out of the general fund. Now, chief, your argument, you know, makes sense at budget time when you come up with your budget to present and say, "Look, my department shouldn't be getting tagged with this much proportion of the health insurance budget because I don't have that many officers to pay for." And that's great, but at budget time. During the course of the budget year, it would seem to me that if you appropriated the money to pay for the health insurance premium, it applies across the city service. If there happens to be, you know, you've saved some money because some employees left in administration or left in the Police Department, that reduction redounds to the benefit of the general fund, not to any particular department. When budget time comes up next year, that department can make its case that it should receive more money because it had a lower expense, a lower expense for insurance in the previous budgetary year. I mean, that's what makes sense to me.
Okay, well, this is my statement. This premium was paid for employees that were no longer even at the Harrahan Police Department. So let's say it was never paid. That would be $21,000 that would still be in the chief's budget, correct?
Well...
But it was allocated for insurance. They paid, so let's say, let's use figures. There's $50,000 for 10 employees, but they really paid for 14 employees, four of those that were no longer employed. They paid the insurance for these people that were no longer even employed, which I don't understand how that happens in the first place. But when it was discovered, the, I agree that the money should go back to where it was originally allocated originally. It was in his department for insurance.
And that's where it is now.
Well, they're saying the general fund.
But Ms. Lulu put it...
It's gonna be in that line item because it's a credit. It's still, it's gonna be money that he's not gonna have to spend out of that line item. So at the end of the year, he would have $21,000 left that he wouldn't have spent because he didn't have to pay that.
On...
And you can reallocate that to another line item.
That's not what Ms. Lulu was saying.
Wait, that's not what she said.
She said it went to the general fund. I never said...
No, I said, that was my man in the street.
You said it went for a deduction for the past two months.
It went as a deduction to the Police Department for what he has paid. But there is, in theory, we would have $21,000 that he could play with, but the health insurance line items across the departments were underfunded because I had increased for the year by...
Did you really make sure you...
I had increased for the year, for 2017, by the usual 12% increase, and the council went back to last year's budget, not last year's actual. So last month, we had passed half of the $69,000 increase that we needed. And this month, we're hopefully going to, well, we're reading for first ordinance, the remaining amount that needs to be increased. And I believe the police chief's line needed $28,000. So there, even though he's gotten a credit of 21, he still needs 28 to cover just the general health insurance increase that happened.
I think it's 20, 23, I think.
Okay, 23.
Okay. We'll check into that because I don't know if we're on the same page on that one. You know, talking about transparency. In May of this year, I issued eight public records requests to the mayor. I have not had a response to one. However, a couple of months ago, the mayor brings up at a council meeting, "Chief Walker, in 1999, when you were on the city council, Mayor Mouska offered you health insurance." What does that have to do with the year 2017? I have no idea. But if the mayor has that kind of time to go into, do research in records, 1999, to find something I did wrong possibly, why can't I get a public records request answered? The other thing I've asked for is invoices that come in from Ms. Lulu, Carl Riggs and Ingram, the city auditor, and Mr. Bures. All they're telling me is I'm being charged for it. I have repeatedly asked for copies of invoices and to see exactly what I'm being charged for. Can't receive it. No transparency. But at the last meeting, you might recall, the mayor made comments in her rebuttal to my presentation, "Well, Chief Walker, you did nothing to try and get an ordinance to get that money back from 16." Wrong. If you remember the last meeting, council members Wheeler, Bodier, went to Carl Riggs and Ingram just for that one reason, on July 13th, 2017, to find a proper format to bring the money back from 16 operating that was leftover from Police Department to 17 capital. However, when they got there, the auditor says, "Well, you didn't get a copy of the audit? The mayor's had it for a couple of weeks." The audit's got the Police Department over budget. As I mentioned a few minutes ago, when we sent documentation to the auditor, they said, "You're $91,000." Ms. Lulu said in two separate emails, "We're either $75,000 or $79,000." We went back and did further research, and we sent documentation again to Carl Riggs and Ingram and also to Ms. Lulu that we believe we had as much as $219,000 under budget last year. And again, no reply, but we still get charged for accounting fees. As I say at all these meetings, it's done by design. It's done for a purpose. And Ms. Lulu, $105 an hour last year was budgeted $48,000, and I'll ask her, but she don't know the answer. She got paid over $140,000, folks. $140,000 for accounting, and we can't get answers. You know? And because I asked to take money out of my payroll to pay for the two cars, I get a letter from Ms. Lulu's attorney today that she's not gonna do anything improper or illegal that I request. But again, she's paid $140-something thousand for last year for accounting services. There was no budget amendments, and she was allocated 48. Explain that one to me. Transparency. Thank you.
Mayor, before you dig in, I just have a couple of questions. Mr. Bures, when someone puts a public records request in, how is that addressed by law? What is the timeframe on a public records request?
You have three days to give a response. After five days, if there's no response, the question is entitled to apply suit or response. The three-day response, all the custodian has to do is give a response and say, "I'm working on it." If law doesn't require that you actually produce the documents within five days, that you can respond, that you're working on it, and trying to get it, exactly, acknowledgement that you received it, that you are a custodian. If you want to present, if a custodian wants to present objections to public records requests such as, "I'm not the custodian, or it's privileged, it's not subject to public records law," that is then tested in court and requested parties to be charged. There's no clear case law on when the last minute is to file suit. Generally, the courts have looked at this, and usually the question and the question the agency from whom the documents are requested, try to work something out as to the time of production. So you very, very seldom see all documents produced within five days. Because all the custodians required to do is just give a response, you know? Three days, here's my response, I'm working on it. So the courts look at it from a, you know, a reasonable test. You know, thirty days later, you never, though you got your letter within three days, thirty days later, you still don't have the stuff. Sue this file. The judge looks at it and says, "Well, is there good cause for taking all this time? Reducing the documents." And it's that kind of case-by-case determination from which the judge makes a decision as whether to put house or water turn these fees or on the records or get a search.
Chief, have you gotten any response whatsoever?
When they were sent in May of this year, I got an email saying it was under whatever review. You know, like Mr. Bures says, "I try not to waste city money. I can get an attorney, and the mayor's gonna hire Mr. Bures, and it's gonna be $300, $400 an hour between two attorneys to get this information." Why, they just can't turn it over? You know, we're supposed to be transparent, you know? Never happens. Just like I'll never get access to NCODE. But if we would've had that information in NCODE, we probably could've caught that those four employees were being paid health insurance for that year, and we wouldn't have lost that money, along with a few other problems that have come to our attention in recent months. But, again...
So, Mr. Bures, do you not find that issue here, that it's, he's asked in May, and it's now September, and...
Well, I don't need enough, I don't know. What was requested, chief?
I mean, I get the list out. Y'all got copies. When I send an email out, folks, I copy the council...
I also have multiple requests into the chief that I have not gotten information.
And let me tell you how I deal with it as a city attorney. A public records request that's come in, that have come from the public, if Nicole forwards that stuff to me, or I somehow otherwise get it, I give that priority. These interneccing wars, you know, mayor, council, council, police chief, you know, I sort of take a hands-off approach on this, hoping that the political process will work itself out instead of billing the City of Harrahan $175 an hour to try to be mediated. I'm just trying to take a practical view of this.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm asking.
And, you know, quite frankly, you know, all of these records in City Hall, you know, they're...
It's just, the reason why I ask is because, you know, of course, I've served in the past. Think, you know, I've served in the past. I've been very killed for that. And I've never had this issue before, ever, under any mayor or anyone. I've always asked for something. It was, it was just provided on the spot. So, Mayor, I just want to clarify, you saying because you've asked the chief for stuff, and he hasn't given it to you, he's asking you for stuff, so you're not gonna give it to him?
No, that's not what I...
You just said, well, you've asked him for several things, and...
I'll, I'll complete my responses. I don't want, you know...
I just wanted, you know, that two wrongs don't make a right.
Nope. I'll respond when I have my opportunity.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Are you finished with your presentation?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. All right, well, I'd like to answer, I'd like the questions that you said I could ask when he was finished. The one thing I'd like to go back to is the emergency meeting, chief. You said you would address that after he spoke.
I'm gonna address everything when we're done. I think I'll have comments.
We're gonna wait till midnight?
Ready? I didn't take an hour at every meeting to go through the same issues for, that have been two and a half years.
Well, it's a shame he has to...
So what we'll do is, we'll go in to address the council, and I'll address the council first. Emergency management. The City of Harrahan received a phone call. I did not receive a phone call. One of the employees of the city received a phone call, saying that there was a mayor's meeting, an infrastructure meeting by phone the next morning. Received it pretty late. I was told about it. Keith Conley, the COO, was conducting it. The Keith Conley, the COO, also told the chief in person that this was an infrastructure meeting. It was in the very beginning when Harvey was far, far out, and that as we moved through the process, more and more people were gonna be invited in that meeting. The chief has meetings all the time. I don't go to all of the chief's meetings. The chief is welcome to come to my Monday morning. I have a Monday morning staff meeting. He refuses to come. He doesn't attend. He chooses not to. So I received message of the emergency management infrastructure meeting, and I came in. So I was gonna go with Chief Todd St. Seer to go to the building. We both conversed and said, "Hey, why don't we do it here and see whoever's available?" So whoever was available, we wind up getting together at the last minute and got everyone on the speaker. And I believe I even mentioned to Chief St. Seer during the meeting, or right prior to, let me see where, the police chief is. At no point was the police chief left out. The police chief apparently had an invitation. There is no way that I would have excluded. This was at the last minute, I believe, on a Thursday, if I'm recalling right. And the next day, morning, 10 o'clock, was the first infrastructure meeting about the thing. Then they started doing regular meetings, and we met as a cohesive team and started talking, discussing, and every single meeting went smoothly. But this was clarified to the chief, and that, of course, and I had texted him immediately. I think I tried to get him on the phone, and it may have been after the meeting would have started. But it wasn't a formal request like we usually get for an emergency management meeting where it was an email, that it was sent out, that we, I can't even tell you how far it was in the Gulf. So I was happy that you were invited. The chief doesn't seem to reciprocate his concern. He was invited to an emergency management meeting. He did not invite me to go with him. He didn't invite any of our staff. He didn't care to find out if we were informed and if we knew. So I don't know where the complaint even lies. So that's about the emergency management. And I've also asked Keith Conley to supply a letter to address this, to say that I didn't leave him out. It wasn't my meeting, and it wasn't my meeting to invite. I invited my staff. I, he's a duly-elected police chief. I have my staff, he has his staff. So that's how the emergency management, because...
I have to just say this, Mayor. Your explanation means no...
Wait, hold on. It's my address, it's my address to council.
But your explanation makes zero sense.
It's the city as a whole.
It does.
It makes zero sense.
Excuse me.
You knew the day before, but it was an immediate. You checked availability, but you didn't. Chief St. Seer was there, but Chief Walker wasn't. None of your explanation makes any sense.
I have the floor. I have the floor. I'm sure everyone concurs. I have the floor. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So it does make sense, Ms. Healy?
Negative.
It does make sense.
No.
So, and we met every single day, sometimes twice a day thereafter, for, I think, the next week, on Harvey, correct, Chief St. Seer? Every single communication. Did we send it and included everyone? Did we not? Thank you. Then, um, let's just talk about, there are so many issues. The budget process. Appearance bonds, let's take that one. That was something that he addressed with the auditor. We also addressed with the city attorney for appearance bond fees. We're not, we don't make up the rules as we go, we have to follow the law. At my request, the city attorney issued a legal opinion on appearance bond fees. That legal opinion was provided to the chief, the legal opinion was provided to the auditor, to Ms. Linda Lulu. That legal opinion was followed.
What was the opinion?
Wait, yeah, what was the opinion?
For appearance bond fees. Uh, we'd have to pull out the, uh, opinion.
I have it right here in front. It's an eight-page opinion, I've voted a lot of time and studied to this appearance bond fee issue. To make a long story short, your appearance bond fee of fifteen dollars, thirteen of it is to be appropriated for law enforcement purposes, the other two of it can be, the statute says may, may be sent to the Louisiana Chief of Police Association, if it's not, the city retains it. The thirteen-dollar appropriation is to be made to what, you know, there is no case law interpreting the statutes, thirty-three, twenty-three, thirty-four, because subsection B-1 does not declare when the thirteen-dollar appropriation is to be made, or what constitutes open quote, "law enforcement purposes." It is my opinion that in light of the directive that it is subject to applicable law, the statute must be read consistently with other laws relating to the confection, adoption, and amendment of the city budget. In short, the thirteen-dollar portion of the fee is to be appropriated for law enforcement purposes in the normal course of city budgetary practice. I read the chief of police language as an expression of legislative intent that the funds find their way to police purposes regardless of whether the municipality in question has a separate police department, has an administrative subdivision. So your thirteen dollars of assess, of, of appearance bond fees gets appropriated to law enforcement purposes. Now, the appearance bond fee is to be refunded to an individual upon acquittal of the defendant, that's what the statute says. The statute says that upon acquittal of the defendant, the fee shall be refunded to the individual who paid the fee. I note that restriction of the funds only to those acquitted is problematical. A similar statute, RS thirteen twenty-five, uh, two thousand five point three C, relative to bail bond fees in the municipal courts of New Orleans, now repealed, provided for the refund to the defendant if he is determined to be not guilty or if the charges are dismissed. I suggested to the mayor that an audit be conducted to find out what do you have in the way of acquittals, dismissals, and determinations of not guilty, to see if, if there is any liability for refunds of these fees, and if so, what the magnitude of, of the appearance bond fund fee refund is. So, it's an eight-page opinion, uh, and it was addressed to the chief and to the mayor because both of them had propounded a number of questions about these appearance bond fees. One of the problematical things about your ordinance, because you have both a state statute that controls this and then an ordinance that, that's applicable to it. The ordinance was amended, um, it's section eighteen dash four of the Harahan Municipal There were two different sections of it, and then it was amended in two thousand one, and the second section got deleted. Um, that's the way it's published by MuniCode, that's the way it appears on the, the city's official website. So, the HM, you know, the Harahan Municipal Code at this time has deleted the second section that appeared before two thousand one. All I can do is read the statute as it exists, and what, I don't know what happened, but here's how you do it. When you amend an ordinance, and this is why I told you when I took the job, you know, this is, this, there's a technical way to do this. When you state, I'm amending an ordinance, those portions that are unaffected should be marked by marks of ellipsis. That indicates to the publisher of the, of the ordinance how to deal with what's already on the books. That didn't happen in two thousand one, what was sent over to MuniCode was, we're amending section eighteen dash four, here's how it reads. And that second section wasn't included, and it wasn't noted by marks of ellipsis. So MuniCode has published, you know, exactly what was sent to them, which is about the fifteen-dollar appearance bond fee. I think the part that was deleted, and I don't want to talk out of turn here, I want to make sure I get this right. The original statute was adopted in nineteen eighty-six and amended in eighty-nine and ninety-five. Subsequent to the nineteen ninety-five revision, the city of Harahan adopted ordinance ten ninety-eight, which acknowledged that the nineteen ninety-five legislative, legislative act, and instructed the clerk of court to collect an eight-dollar appearance bond fee from any individual who has provided an appearance bond, including cash, commercial surety, personal surety, signature, or driver's license for an arrest or violation of any ordinance of the city of Harahan. Section two of the ordinance, of ordinance ten ninety-eight provided, the revenue from this fee shall be paid to the general fund of the municipality with all proceeds to be dedicated to a capital projects fund for the Harahan Police Department unless otherwise requested by the chief of police. When it gets amended in two thousand one, that section two drops out. So the chief said, this is my money for the capital. I said, no, chief, I mean, the statute reads right now, you get, there's thirteen dollars that the council gets to appropriate for police purposes, but all this capital fund language is not there anymore. So, you know, that was one of the issues that I looked at in this eight-page opinion, I'll be happy to send a copy of it to you, but the appearance bond fee was something I looked at very carefully for you, and I do have a formal opinion on it, and I'll stand by it.
And would you further explain that the amount of the appearance bond fee is per bond taken, not per ticket?
Yes, like, how, how do you get it? And, let me see if I can flip to that. I'll just cut to my opinion. It's my opinion that the appearance bond fee is neither imposable upon nor authorized for persons merely issued a summons to appear in court. Only arrestees are required to pay the bond fee, and only those posting appearance bonds consisting of cash, commercial surety, personal surety, signature, or driver's license. So, it's not for, you don't get the appearance bond fee for every ticket. You actually have to be arrested, and then you have to post cash, commercial surety, personal surety, signature, or driver's license as your bond. And, you know, appearance bond fees and bail bonds fees have all been the subject of a lot of litigation in Louisiana, in the federal courts, in the past twenty years. Part of the reason for it is, they've been challenged as excessive bail, they've been challenged as impacting people who can't pay the things. And the latest pronouncement of the Louis, of the United States Fifth Circuit on bail bonds fees, and this was given about ten years ago, um, when they were challenged as being excessive bail fees, was that, look, these are de minimis charges intended to defray the cost of operating the appearance bond system. In other words, the municipalities, it's empowered to impose these minimal fees to defray the cost of actually, if somebody doesn't show up on the bond, having a police officer go out and haul them back in. That's what it's there for. It's intended not to fatten the public coffers, it's not intended to be an extra fine, it's merely intended to make sure that you've got the money available to defray the expenses of police officers who have to go out and physically arrest and drag in somebody who's ignored the fact that they posted a bond, and then they don't show up in the courthouse. So, you read these things narrowly, and in Harahan's case, it's only imposed on arrestees, that's what your ordinance says, and that's what the state statute seems to require.
So, if you get arrested and there are five counts, it's one fee?
And that's, that was another one, are you stacking this? Do you get, do you get multiple, you know, for every charge, do you get fifteen dollars for every charge? And the courts have generally looked at this, well, it, yeah, if you, if you got two different things that you have to show up for on different dates, you've got two different appearance bonds. If it's, if you got arrested once, you got five different charges and you set one date, that's one appearance bond. That's different from bail. Bail's a different thing. Now, a judge can set bail on each of those charges at a different rate, but the appearance bond is just meant to get you back into the court. And so, you can't stack them up, it's illegitimate to stack them up, but there's only one trial date, you get one appearance bond fee, because if you miss that date, one officer goes out and hauls you back in, that's only a one-time event. So, yeah, there, there are a lot of little nuances on the appearance bond fee, and I think I covered almost every one of them, in my opinion.
Okay, except for one. So the money that's being collected, where is it at?
Right.
It's in the court department. It's in the court department, fines and forfeitures, and, um...
You broke it?
He's so strong.
Don't touch it again.
I turned it off. I, can you just, like, take a break for a second? I don't want anybody to see me doing this.
Let's go, let's make a racket.
See if it works.
Yeah, it worked. All right, you go.
Go ahead.
Okay, the revenue is located, already fines and forfeitures, in the court department, it's on the general fund.
Where it's taken in?
Zero one oh, three, one nineteen, three one two four one. Uh, we're budgeted for eleven thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars this year.
And where, where are we at in the process of figuring out what really was collected and what really shouldn't have been collected, and when is the chief gonna get that?
Well, we talked to CRI about that, and the fact that the amount of monies that it costs to run the police department is way beyond the eleven thousand dollars. It's, it's not like we're collecting all this money extra to give him.
If you're collecting the money and it's supposed to go to him, Mr. Bures just said that y'all are trying to figure out what money should have been accepted, which one shouldn't have been accepted, and y'all are going through that right now, in the process of going through...
Not, not accepted, is there anything that has to be refunded?
Right.
Yeah.
And where did the money go, in the meantime, that's supposed to be going to the chief?
We were told that it was, we were fined, correct?
So ordinance states that it goes to the police, again, and it just goes wherever.
Where, historically, they would do a journal entry? I forget, how did they, they included it in total revenues for police? I believe that, I, I forget how it was, I'd have to go and relook.
I don't know, a long time ago, it eventually was moved to the capital project fund, but that ceased with the loss of that portion of the ordinance.
But it's a revenue, it's not an increased expense?
Right, it's no expense, it's a revenue.
Well, like, what did we do with the last...
Same spot.
It's still there, it's still paying.
It's a revenue, like any other revenue that is gained, and it doesn't affect anyone's, it doesn't affect the bottom line really or anything, it's just, it's a revenue, just like any other fines and forfeitures that the court collects.
It's a revenue in, in court, right?
Right.
How does it get, make its way to police?
It doesn't. It doesn't, it sits on, on the court revenue.
I mean, it did, but it doesn't now.
Right, it's supposed to.
But it's supposed to, right?
Uh, CRI said it was fine, where it is.
Can't hear you back, can you speak into the microphone, please?
Mr. Bures, we had talked about this at length, being that, um, the amount of revenue that the police bring in compared to the total on the general fund, you know...
Well, you know, the, you know, the difficulty in, in this is the, the difficulty you find in a lot of government budgetary practice. You know, if you had a dedicated revenue, if you had a dedicated tax avail, that had to go to the defraile of expenses in the fire department, just to take a concrete example, you know, money's fungible, you know? You can shift dollars around all over the place, you know, that, we know that there's a, there is this bottom line amount that a police department or a fire department has to be appropriated every year because it has a dedicated revenue somewhere, either an ad valorem tax, or in this case, the appearance bond fee. This is an eleven thousand dollar, okay, so it's, it's pretty de minimis, I mean, it's, it's, yeah. So how did, how is it that at budget time, you figure out that they got that eleven thousand dollars? Because one George Washington bill looks like another George Washington bill, you know, that, there's, there's not a practical way to do that. So, it, it simply means that, yeah, there's eleven thousand dollars there that needs to go to the police department. If your city was flat broke but only had eleven thousand dollars and it came out of the appearance bond fee, one department gets it, the Department of Police. As a matter of fact, that's not what happens, so how you track that eleven thousand dollars in a million-dollar budget?
It was done, it was done in the past.
You know, but, you know, the...
Because it was dedicated to...
It was, under the, under the old subsection B, it was dedicated to a capital account. So you have a specific line item.
Well, maybe we need to go back and amend that ordinance and correct it, and give the police department the money that they should receive.
And, and look, I, I said flat out, you know, that's, it, I told the chief, when he first showed this to me, I said, go address this with the city council. The way I'm looking at Muni, MuniCode right now, what your statute says, this is what I say it says as a lawyer, this is how this thing reads. And MuniCode just has one section, it's just got that one section.
I happen to be on a council when we amended the ordinance to increase it to fifteen dollars.
That's all it was meant to do, to increase the amount from, I think, eight to fifteen. And when Mr. Heinz was our former finance director, he had a conversation with my staff and myself, that when he was gonna get around to it, there was a whole lot of money that was owed to us for appearance bonds that had been collected and is still on the books. I haven't had, I've been here since May of fourteen, I haven't had a penny of it, so... But it's, it's like everything else, they don't want me see ENCODE because I might see where it's at, and it goes back to the same issue.
You received all the documents about the appearance bond fees, Jackie's supplied them to you.
No ma'am.
So I'll finish going through the litany of them.
I have to say, though, and this is, please, no disrespect, I still don't quite understand why the money isn't going to the police department. There seems to be a lot of philosophical discussion about it, a lot of subjectiveness, feelings. What is the process? If the process in the past for the MuniCode and the Harahan ordinance is to accept this money and then put it here, here being the police department, and section two has been deleted for some reason, and that has been uncovered in the last two years, interesting enough, but not prior to, two years ago. But that's uncovered now, so let's, let's amend or fix the ordinance to put it back, because obviously this has been uncovered for a reason, but to do what's right, and stop this subjective, philosophical of this than that, but maybe we shouldn't. If we should, and it's police money, because it's appearance bond money, because the police go get the person to come to court to pay, and they're paying fines from the police writing the ticket, doesn't everyone get to the same end, that the money goes to the police department?
Well, but here's why, it's, it's not, it's not just philosophical, it's like, you say, I got eleven thousand bucks that I collected from appearance bond fees.
It's my feeling.
Wait, it goes to the general fund, and all you're obligated to do, as the council, is appropriate it for police purposes. So you appropriate a hundred fifty thousand dollars, the chief asks, well, where's my eleven thousand?
Where is it?
It's, it's in the hundred and fifty we just appropriated. So, it's not, it's not a dedicated revenue, it doesn't go to a separate line item.
Well, Chief St. Seer, just offhand, not on microphone, asked, he has a fifteen-dollar fee for the fire department, and he has no idea where it's gone.
But it's a dedicated thing, it goes right to his line item.
It's dedicated.
It comes in on the revenue side and then it goes out into...
Okay, so instead of let's, oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
Here's where my problem is. Over the years, as that money has increased, my budget didn't necessarily increase the following year.
Correct.
And that was due to maybe taking in less revenue or them deciding not to give us as much general fund revenue.
And that's your, basically, your revenue that you have for the department.
But because we've received more than what our dedicated revenue was, it was stated that you did, in fact...
You got your money.
That money.
It was in there. In the one sum. That's how it is?
Yeah, it's...
It's, it's not, who, I don't like it.
And that's because, not...
It doesn't work for me.
That's, that's what the courts call the mechanics of the...
Listen, I'm all about fixing things, so if we identify the problem, let's all here discuss how we can fix it, and let's come to the decision on how we fix it, to do what's right.
As a reassessment, when I add a loan deposit we get, and we should receive another fifteen thousand dollars or an additional fifteen thousand dollars next year, if it doesn't come in the way of the budget, I take issue with that. Because the city didn't take in less revenue the following year, they just chose not to.
Give it to you.
Give it to them.
And part of the, the biggest problem is that every department is not self-sufficient.
Correct.
That is the problem. We don't have a millage that covers completely the fire. We don't have a millage that completes, completely covers police. We do not have a millage that, even if this millage that's up for, uh, to be voted on, on sewer, on October fourteenth, if it passes, we still will not have a millage that completely funds the sewer, on and on. So what happens is, we have ad valorem, we have sales tax, we have video poker money, we have DOTD money, et cetera, et cetera. So then, everyone who's not completely funded from their revenues, it gets divvied up by the council. That's how it's done. And in fact, I can recall Ms. Wheeler saying, well, you know what, the court doesn't bring in enough revenue to have this many people, so it doesn't equal, so we're gonna cut 'em. So, now we have one employee instead of where we used to have three, and the percent that they weren't bringing in compared to what it costs to run them was far smaller than the police department, the fire department, and other departments. So, we have some decisions to make as a city. How do we move that forward? How do we fit and say what's fair? How do we say how much ad valorem goes to everyone, how much sales tax goes to everyone? That's what we do in the budget process. But until each department is independently funded, we're gonna have these issues about, you know what, Chief St. Seer's right, he's got fifteen dollars a fee on the ad valorem taxes. That's not enough in a fire millage, it's not enough to funding. It's a problem. It's the same way that we have a problem with garbage fees. We're charging the residents far less than it costs for us to provide the service. Where does that money come from?
So ma'am, why did we give them an additional thirty-five thousand dollars?
Or let me state for court, for the, so that the citizens can understand this, when the mayor presented the budget, she increased the expenditures in the court department when its revenue was down over thirty percent.
The revenue is down, oh, wait, it's my address, the council. But we've gotta get on the city business.
Well, I just wanna state for the record, you cannot increase expenditures when your revenue is down. So for me to justify increasing a department when the revenue's down thirty percent, I'm sorry, I wasn't gonna go for it.
But how do you justify your logic? It doesn't go across all departments, Councilman Wheeler.
We're talking about court, mayor. We're talking about court.
We're talking about budget practices. So you have the police that used to collect almost seven hundred thousand dollars in tickets. Now we'll be lucky to get two hundred and twenty. It's a shortfall of a half a million dollars almost. I, I'm not, I, I'm just saying. So it, it is what it is.
Well, Mr. Bures, I would like to, we need to rectify or correct or amend this ordinance for appearance bonds, and let's clear this and get the police department the budget that it's money that it's owed, and we can move on.
I have another comment about the, the appearance bonds, because, you know, we took, it took us like half a year here to figure out the amount... I, I had a further question, maybe Gil can actually help with, about the appearance bonds, it took us...
I gotta turn it on.
Okay, is that better? Okay. We figured out now how to charge properly the appearance bond, like you just described. I have a question about collecting it, because like you just finished saying, it's not truly ours until such time.
Right, until there's a disposition of the case.
Right, so right now, someone pays us a dollar for it, it immediately goes to the revenue line item. I don't care what revenue line item, it goes to a revenue line item, and we are recognizing that revenue. I'm feeling after this discussion that it needs to be going into a holding account, a payable account.
You put, you put that in a suspense account or a trust account until such times there's a disposition of the case. It's only your money after there has been an acquittal of, of the individual and the bond is released. So, yeah, you can't spend the money that day.
And shouldn't it also be in a separate bank account?
I don't know if that's necessary, I'll, I'll leave that to the accountants, because I, I don't know what your professional standards are on that. If this were a lawyer's, I, I, I tell you what, I tell you what I'll do, I'll investigate what other courts do, all right? Since I represent some courts.
Okay, thank you.
Asset forfeiture account. When I took office, asset forfeiture account is a very strict account. There are very strict parameters on how it's used. I'll never forget, I was standing, sitting behind my desk, and the chief of police comes in and says, I need you to sign this right now. I need you to sign it right now, right this second, right now. I'm like, well, I really need to look at this. Are we gonna be doing it correctly? Do we budget this? Should it be transparent? Should it come before the council? It has its own accounts, et cetera, et cetera. At that point, I could not feel good about signing a check stat immediately at once without looking into whether it was the appropriate utilization of that money. There are serious consequences for doing it wrong. In the meantime, if you look at, the chief of police had an audit done for the police when he took office in two thousand and fourteen. That legislative audit report stated that the appearance bond checkbook that the police chief cannot write checks, cannot write checks on the asset forfeiture account. Then we brought it up again with Carl Riggs and Ingram, presented the audit from two thousand and fourteen for the police, asked them, also got the research, the legal research. The chief cannot write checks off of that. I've also, what has to happen is, you have to be very, very careful to make sure that those expenditures meet the requirements. So I did my due diligence. I called people in the community, including the IG for Jefferson Parish, who said it is very reasonable and wonderful transparency to recommend to put everything before the council and get, put it on the budget so everyone can see the money in and the money out and where it's been spent. Thought it was a great idea, and also concurred that the chief cannot sign that check. So instead of coming before the public and embarrassing, I sent private emails to communicate, wanting to talk to the chief, not publicly slap, can we fix this? And I have yet to get a reply. That was supposed to, I asked for a reply to start the, to get that back in order and to have him get back to me by September eleventh. I have yet to hear from him as far as that goes. And also grants, the chief will sit there and say, use this money for this grant. Well, he did that, and lo and behold, it was wrong. It had to be reversed. You can jeopardize ever getting any more grant money. Thank goodness, Ms. Lulu went behind, saw that it was incorrectly allocated to a grant, and fixed it. So that was wonderful, protected our grants that we need. Then the cars. This is, I'm not gonna address everything else, because we're gonna get to address the council for everyone else. Everyone wants to talk about the Doyle case here in Harahan. So I did, I took a few minutes today and I went to the old ordinance book and pulled the actual Doyle case. Not only did I pull the budget that they referred to, I got the actual reading of the Doyle case. When the chief quotes it, there's a certain important piece that's being left off about the Doyle case. See, this is the ordinance from nineteen ninety-one, so yes, I do come across things that are old, chief, and they're very pertinent to today. And this ordinance was nine ninety-six, and this was the budget for the year. I'm so glad that we've gotten a little bit more sophisticated that compared to our budget. I'm a little bit jealous of their line items, because they have better line items than the council gave me to run the city on some of them. So... This budget ordinance was then amended, there was a bond that they took out. It was amended with ordinance number nine nine seven, which the opinion refers to. And they put money to capital. And anyone, I'm gonna post this on the internet for everyone to see, since we keep referring to the Doyle case. And what's interesting is that they amended the city, the budget, they added capital, because there was much discussion about a bond that they took out to do work for the police and move it from the old post office, et cetera, gives us the work. And under expenditures, they put general government fifty thousand, police department a hundred and sixty. They just put expenditure. They didn't say to pay off the bond, they didn't say for cars, they didn't say what it was, they just did a lump sum on the expenditure. So Chief Doyle was right. He could spend that one sixty under capital any way he wanted, because it was allocated in a general way. It didn't have a specific line item. But I'll refer you back. Let's go and look how they did the budget line item for the police, because the police had line items...
From the general fund.
In their general account, and each one said uniforms, gas, utility, just this insurance, general liability insurance, et cetera. Just like we do today, and when you do the budget on the capital. The other thing that's interesting is that there were contingency funds, a little loose money in case you needed to go and do a, that wasn't covered in your budget. The police had contingency, the mayor had contingency funds, so that you didn't have, if you went a dollar over, you weren't over budget. You could go and say, you know what, this wasn't covered on a line item, I've got a little play here. So that's the Doyle case. What's interesting too, is on the Doyle case, when the budget was amended on the capital, the motion was made to pass the ordinance on nine nine seven by Alderman Baraco and seconded by Alderman Walker. The budget ordinance for capital was wrong. What they wanted to do, they didn't state correctly in their budget ordinance. So Chief Doyle had every right to go and buy cars, the microfiche, and whatever he wanted. And interesting enough, the discussion was about paying off a bond. I had a brief discussion with Ms. Lulu, I think the bond that they were talking about trying to pay off was the bond that we paid off last year and closed. That's how long. So when you do a budget, you better be very clear on how you state it. When you do an ordinance about asset appearance bonds, and you don't wanna omit that it goes to the capital fund, so you better make sure that you carry it all forward. If you want to give a contingency line or a lump sum and say, you know what, chief, you're gonna have some incidentals, here's a line item for incidentals, mayor, we know you're gonna have incidentals, and we're gonna also give you a little flexibility, that if you go within two percent of a line item, that, you know, we're, we're gonna give you some flexibility instead of, you know, very, very, very tight. So Ms. Judy, I'll ask you to get that on the, on the website as well. So we have a lot more that we can do. The one last thing I wanna talk to is about the cars. The police were very generously given a hundred and eighty thousand dollars for police cars by Councilman Johnston. And Councilman Johnston, we thank you from the bottom of our heart, we really do. It's a very generous, wonderful thing, we want our police to have what, what they need to have. What the police chief said was, I want Ms. Lulu to cut a check for cars, and I want it to come from the salary line item. I've said since day one, if we've got some extra money, and the number one problem about retaining police, give them pay raises. The chief has not put that in. I find it a little hard to swallow that we're gonna say, it's okay, I get accused of hiding money, but it's okay from his standpoint to, let's just go ahead and cut the check from the salary line item, then tells Ms. Lulu, oh, at the end, just do those journal entries. Ms. Lulu then explains that's not the law, can't do it. It's fraudulent, it's against her coda ethics, it's against the Louisiana Government Budget Act, it's against GAAP, it's against a lot of things. All you need is a budget amendment, chief, that's all you need. If you wanna move it from salaries, you do it with a budget amendment, and you do it for transparency, a very important word. If you're gonna move it, let the public know. But also, what's the irony, the, the icing on the cake? Is that the mayor's budget, proposed budget, included an increase that was needed for health insurance. It was stripped. We fought about payroll deductions, FICA, all these different things. The police chief now is estimated to have to be over budget on salaries. By eighty-nine thousand dollars was the last run that we just delivered today. So we don't have the money in that line item to do it. It's no insult about the cocks either. I want you to have what you need. You've got, you've got counsel. I put up budget amendments to just fund our financial software, and we weren't given enough money. We put up a budget amendment for three hundred dollars for ink cartridges for our recreational department. It was rejected. It is within the council's realm, their responsibility to handle the fisc. All I ask is to bring it forward. I won't address everything else, it is now addressed the council, everyone else can come. Um, it's addressed the council, if you wanna come back up, we've got a lot of stuff to do. Thank you.
Spike Kidok, forty-three Berkeley Avenue, Harahan, Louisiana. President of Harahan Senior Center Incorporated. I'd like to thank the public and everybody up here for bringing more stuff for our little flea market back there. It's helping us out, and we get to do a lot of stuff with the seniors. So I just wanted to come up and tell everybody thank you.
I would like to also point out, um, Richard, you have dedicated your life to the senior center. You have put in so much volunteer time, you did the hard work to get the five oh one C three, that paperwork off the ground. I would like to just tell you, he also is the chair on the variance board. He has got wonderful, um, commitment to our public, and we thank you from the bottom of our hearts. Thank you.
I appreciate you.
I wanna ask you a question, we've had this dilemma with the planning and zoning board about training. I believe it's two hours of training per year.
Well, actually, state law says every new person that comes on either board needs four hours of training and two hours continuing education every year.
Do you have new people on your appeals board?
Uh, we have, I think, three people right now that's never been certified at all.
So they have no training whatsoever?
No.
So are they, in your interpretation, are you allowed to make a decision without training whatsoever?
I'm not a lawyer. Well, I'm not. I mean, uh, everything I've read, and I've done some homework on it, because, you know, some of the people that come to our board after the meeting, they question, well, you know, what, what right do you have voting this way and stuff like that? And I say, look, y'all can go to the twenty-fourth and sue us if you want.
You want an answer to that question?
Absolutely.
I got it. It's a, it's a case called Bannister versus Department of Streets, where the issue was whether the word shall meant shall. And the Louisiana Supreme Court said, not in this instance, because where a mandatory directive is merely to guide the governmental process and does not affect the rights of third persons, shall can mean may. So that statute is meant to direct the governmental process, it's meant to educate the individuals who sit on those boards. But it doesn't mean that what they do, if they don't get the training, is invalid.
You just said shall can mean may?
Yes.
So is that, because this mayor has told us many, many times that shall can never mean may?
It depends on the context in which it's used, listen to what I said. Bannister versus, that's, that's where lawyers are, that's, that's why we get paid the big bucks.
Hey, now I can say, I'm really not a lawyer, because I definitely don't agree with none of that. We were taught.
I hate, I, I hated the case myself, because I'm the one who lost it. But it's Bannister, it's the Louisiana Supreme Court, Bannister versus Department of Streets. The rule was that the commission had, shall make a decision within sixty days, they didn't. My lady got her job back from the Fourth Circuit, the Supreme Court took it, and the Fourth Circuit said, you didn't comply with that shall. You didn't give her a decision in sixty days. The Supreme Court got a hold of it and said, and reversed the Court of Appeal, and said, no, because the shall in this instance is merely to guide the public officials in the conduct of their government duties, it can mean may, it's not mandatory. So...
And I guess since that, you can use that on any shall you want, huh?
If, if, if the government regulation in question affects the rights of third parties, not governmental actors themselves, if it affects your rights coming before a board, then shall means shall. But if it's just meant to internally govern, just like your board, it's meant to internally govern what happens, you know, get your education.
Well, wait, our board, the board I'm on is an autonomous board. It's not the, the zoning board to where they just make a suggestion and the council votes on it. The only person that can change our vote, no councilman, no mayor, nobody, a judge. So what I, I've been on it for, geez, I don't know, maybe twenty years. And all the education I got, you know, it was, y'all have to do this, you have to do this. And people actually got off the board because they wouldn't do it in the year time. And I've, well, Tina knows, I've, I've, I've tried to get this going, and, because like I said, we have three people on the board right now that's never had an ounce of it, and they're voting.
And, and, and what I'm telling you is, I don't think that lack of education invalidates their vote. I have learned from talking to some city planners that there are resources available for free to get your people the training. And so we're looking, I'm hoping to get a full complement of the planning and zoning commission so that we can do all of this at one fell swoop.
Well, the man that used to do it for us would do it for the planning and zoning and the appeals board at the same time. And he would give like two hours to the zoning board and two hours to our board, but it's kind of mixed... kind of mixes in, you know, some of the stuff. And he'd bring up case law. Never heard that one before. And like I said, he's brought up a bunch of them. I always thought "shall" meant "shall." So I got to ask this question. So in other words, ordinance 1333, when it says "shall," that's a...
It's not guiding the government in its internal operations. It's telling you, "Third party, Mr. Property Owner, you shall do this, that, or the other." It's affecting the rights of people other than the government actor. It's affecting like your personal property rights, and it's mandatory at that point. But what the Supreme Court was saying in that case is, "If it's merely to govern, you know, how the council conducts its business." Say you've got an ordinance on the books that says the council shall do such and such before its meeting, and it forgets to do it, you know, then it's merely directed. It's to guide the government of what it's doing, not the government versus the third person.
But we're not the council. That's why I'm trying to ask you the question.
This applies to any government. This was in the context of a civil service commission. So it applies to all government actors, all government agencies.
Okay.
Okay, and I have one more question for you. And this is as a resident, so you can kick his minutes on right now. As a resident, you and I have been by your house, and I'd like for you to briefly discuss this tree that he has literally across the street from his house. This is one of the most serious things I've seen in this city so far that needs to be addressed, and I mean "addressed now." There's a family that lives in that house with a young child, and his oak tree is rotting and dropping branches that will come down and kill someone instantly. From what I understand, there was talks that it was the council's fault that the council would not allocate funds for Mr. Kiddock...
Wait, let me just go, because I'm the one that told you this. I was told, and I called every one of your council people up, to more or less yell at y'all. In fact, I did yell at you very hard.
Correct.
Okay? About not giving the mayor money to take care of stuff like this. Not only is it a tree situation, but it's a driveway situation that's been like this for years because the sewer was pulled up. Actually, it was pulled up four times. The driveway was tore up three times, okay? And I've been trying to get the driveway. I own the piece of property, okay? I told everyone of y'all about it, except for Dana. You never called me back. You must have been busy or something. But I wanted to tell y'all that, first of all, I sat here for two hours. I don't think anybody in here can really comprehend what's going on. It's a tit for tat. I felt like I'm in grammar school, okay? It's time to stop. It's time to start. Look, I don't know if you're right, Mayor. I don't know if the council's right. I don't know if Tim Walker's right, okay? But if that lady's really making $140,000 for being an accountant, you can damn sure pour my driveway and cut it, trim a tree out. And that's... And I don't know if that's true. I've heard people ask for the last two meetings, and she won't say how much she made. If I make a request, can they give that information to me?
Public records report?
Yeah. Okay, well, guess what? I'm going to do that one day because I like to...
Well, I'd like to give you a whole list of things that I'd like to have also.
Sure. I'll be more than happy to do it, okay? But right now, let's get back to the tree. The tree has fallen. First of all, that tree during Katrina took out my daughter's car, totaled it out, okay? And it was a hurricane, no big deal. Two years ago in May, first of all, the tree was supposed to get trimmed by the end of Vinnie Moskowitz's term, and he had told Edwin there wasn't any money left. It was in November, whatever. I have a lift. I cut the tree. Not only did I cut that tree, but I cut every tree down the street. I got a motor home, so, yeah, okay, I did it personally for myself, but I trimmed out all the trees. They're water holes, all right? I've been trying to get the tree cut down, trimmed, whatever, for safety. Since then, it's done about $3,000 on a brand-new truck, my truck, that was parked across the street from it in my driveway, okay? It's taken out the fence right next to the tree, both gates, had pictures of it all. I just want the tree trimmed or cut. I really don't want the tree cut down, but I really think the tree needs to come down because it's split, okay? And when it rains, all the water comes out the hole, which means there's a big void in the inside. It gives my house shade, all right? I'd love to just get it trimmed, but I think for liability's sake, and now it's on all of y'all, because that's what I want you... That's why I got in touch with y'all, because if somebody gets killed, now y'all know about it, okay? When it comes to my driveway, that Carlo Ferrera, I got the plan right here.
Can I have a motion for more time, please?
I'll have a motion.
Motion for three more minutes?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Johnston. All in favor? Any opposed? We have five yes, zero nays. Motion passed.
Thank you. This is the plan from the city of Harrahann. Edwin Marcello drew this up. This was the second time, okay? What it was. Supposedly, he's supposed to be getting prices. I don't know if he ever has or whatever, okay? It's been three years. I was asked, "Hey, can you wait not to get us to do the driveway so we can make sure it doesn't leak?" Because it did it three times and busted through, made a big old void under there. We all know about sinkholes, okay? Well, that's what it was doing, all right? Actually, me and Carlo and Edwin talked about it. I said, "Sure, let's do it." Well, it went into your administration, and, I mean, with everything going on with you and the council, it's been hard to discuss it. But now to the point where I need this driveway poured, and I need the tree taken care of for safety. Somebody trips, the sidewalk's gone in front of this house, the curb is gone, it's nothing but shells, and I got to keep putting them in there.
Mr. Bures, what do we need for... to replace a driveway or if he's got... I have no documentation that... From the past, that's... I don't know that I've seen that picture written.
Edwin Marcello told me. He showed it to you. Now, if he's lying to me, I don't know. All I can do is say what he told me. You want to look at it right now?
I believe you. I'm just saying I don't know that I recall seeing it.
But there's no council member here, and I told y'all, the ones I talked to yesterday, none of y'all would allow this, and Mayor, you wouldn't allow it either, if it was... if that was your house, would allow that to go on as long as it has.
As I told you last night, as we were not... I know I wasn't aware of the situation, and we do have money in capital to be able to do stuff. It's not just all general fund.
Like I said, y'all...
So we do have money in capital.
Y'all start playing nice.
Do we have money in capital?
There's a lot of it in capital.
We can move money in the capital. They have a balance in capital.
I even told... I did the same thing when Vinnie was mayor.
This again goes back to process. By law, we're supposed to have a capital budget. I put forth in the proposed budget because it has to be... I have to, as the chief executive of this city, be able to take care of capital projects. This falls under a capital project. I do not... That was ripped, stripped. So something that's mandated by law, I was given zero dollar amount for.
In this year, but he's been saying it's been going on for two years.
It means no, Spike.
So...
Means no.
So without that ordinance to allocate money, I can't do it legally.
Okay, well, let me just... Let me ask this question. Each one of you council people up here, y'all are the ones that put money into her budget, because she said y'all took it all away from her, and that's why she couldn't help it, all right? Y'all put the money in? Are y'all willing, right now, vote in front of all of these people, willing to put money in her budget to take care of my driveway?
It goes into capital.
And the city broke up, okay, and should replace it, and trim a tree or cut a tree down? That's a liability for somebody getting killed. You came out and saw it.
And I emailed the mayor about the tree, and her response was it was on the list.
It's on the list.
And like I told you last night, we can pull money from capital. We can give her $10,000 for your driveway, $20,000 for a tree. We can do that. There's... We have the right to do that. I'm just using figures. I'm facetious. Whether the city is going to do it, because we gave $6,000 to the maintenance department for their garage door to be repaired probably three or four months ago, if not longer, and the door's still not fixed, and that's what I told you last night.
I understand.
We can allocate the funds.
But the time... But we also are getting two roll-up garage doors instead of one because we got that $700,000 grant. So by doing that, guess what, Mr. Kiddock? We're going to get more bang for your buck that you pay on your taxes.
And in the meantime, somebody can get hurt.
Right.
And you know what, Craig? You also gave eight pages of amendments stripping all capital funds, and you have left all the residents...
That's because capital funds is not supposed to be like you think it's supposed to be. It's supposed to come through the council, and it's supposed to have the approval for each item that we have to do under capital. That is how it has always been running, and that's how it's supposed to be run.
No, it's not.
Okay. I don't want to get into the politics of it. I just want to ask each council member, if this money is approved, are y'all going to make sure that it goes? Or Tina, are you going to make sure it goes? And are y'all willing to do that? That's what I want to know.
So...
We need to estimate, and I'm willing to put the money there.
Mr. Kiddock?
Yes, ma'am.
So anyone else who has a tree that we have to do, right? So am I supposed to figure out that, okay, you know what? I've got 20 trees I want to cut. I've got 10 pipes I need to replace. I've got this, and this, this. We put money into all those line items. It was stripped. So I have pleaded with this council, saying, "That's unsafe to strip all the money from capital."
And I just told you that. I yelled at them last night, okay? About it, and they tell me that...
We have city businesses.
They can put it back in, and I don't really... No offense to y'all, I don't care about the garage door, and I don't care about anything else right now, okay?
I was just using it as an example.
I understand. Right now, I want to know if my driveway can get poured, that the city broke up. This is... I'm not the individual that, you know, that the sidewalks cracked and they want that, because if you want to talk about that, I could tell you about 100 other places in Harrahann. I'm talking about two things that have gone on too long, and I want them fixed. And if I can't get them fixed, then I'm going to have to do what I have to do to get them fixed. But if y'all, all of y'all, all five of y'all, six of y'all, y'all need to work together for the city. Everybody's tired of it. At least I am. I come to the meetings for a couple hours, and I walk out and I'm going like, "God, it's the same stuff over and over and over."
I agree.
So I want to let you know that, for sure, we will get this done. We will allocate this money. You'll probably have to fight for it, but we will allocate the money. I can guarantee you that. And if there's any unsafe... Any unsafe tree in the city of Harrahann that's jeopardizing what we saw last night, please, please, please inform us about it. And yes, we will get it cut down. By hook or crook, we will get it done. Like I told you, when it comes down to protecting our citizens and the welfare, safety of our people, I will do what I got to do to spend, just like we had to do on Wilson, which we've been ridiculed over and over and over about, and it was just not safe for people.
And that's why you don't strip away all capital funds.
Well, America, you would have kept us included in all of the conversation. It would have never happened, but you choose to do everything on your own like a wild cowboy.
Hey, hey, hey. Let me... I got to go see my dad.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, you're next.
I just want to make sure that y'all are all on the same page, that we're going to take care of this driveway, and we're going to take care of the tree. And if there's anything else anywhere else that's unsafe, that y'all give it the money to do that too?
Give us an estimate, please.
No, no, no. That's not my job, is it?
It's not his job.
First of all, Edwin has estimates.
Can we move?
Okay, he has estimates right now.
You're going to need an alborist to go out there, and then you're going to need...
Thank you. I'm just trying to move on. We're going to get it.
Well, I understand, and I've been trying to get it done for three years. So, I mean, I'm just trying to make sure. I've heard a couple people say, "Yeah." I hadn't heard all of y'all say, "Yeah."
Well, I can't say that because... I can't say yes or no because I'm confused. Last meeting, we tried to get ordinances passed, and Ms. Lulu was asked where would the money come from. She shrugged her shoulders because there was no money. It had all been stripped away. So we couldn't pay $300 for uniforms for regulatory at the last meeting, so I don't know where...
Don't worry about it. The regulatory got shirts this week.
And don't worry about the toner from the playground, because I took care of that all myself.
Okay, myself and two other people bought shirts for the t-shirts.
The point is, I can't say yes because I don't think there is any money.
Okay. You're telling me the city doesn't have any money?
In capital, they have money.
We didn't have money last...
Okay. Are you willing to put it in capital, Sue?
I'll...
I'm asking you.
That's where that should come from. It should come from...
Yes, it's a capital expense.
Okay. Is everybody willing to take it out?
Yes. Yes.
Sue?
I'm not going to say.
Like I said, it's going to take a little time. We have to get alborists out there, and then they have to go...
I can't hear you. Thank you.
If they give you the money, we're going to take care of it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Robert Johnson, 6735 Riverside Drive. Mayor, you announced the upcoming millage election for the sewer. You only encourage residents to exercise their right to vote. I would hope that you would take a stand either for it or against it. I don't know how to vote. I'm sure there's a lot of people out here that don't really know how to vote, and they're looking for your leadership. The largest amount of our tax dollars goes to the police department. Mayor, you said about 15 minutes ago to the police chief, "I want you to have what you need." Direct quote. I think everybody here wants the police chief to get his financials in electronic format on a timely basis. If it's called ENCODE, I encourage you to give him ENCODE. It's not worth the battle. Give him access. It's like having one of these sunscreen visors in front of all the police cars and expecting the policemen to drive their cars without being able to see where they're going. Give him all the access. It's our tax dollars. We want him to have every tool to use those tax dollars in the best way possible, and you can give him those tools.
John Ream, 3 Renpass. No manufacturing shall be done on-site. That's 1333. That's the ordinance that protects Harrahann against what's going on on the bachelor.
It's a "shall."
"Shall." And it works in this case, right?
Edwin can make sense.
Okay. Let me get my glasses. At the June 16th, 2016 Harrahann council meeting, I think you all remember that, over a year ago, Wood Materials attorney, Remy Donnelly, and Price with Lanier and Associates Engineering Group, gave a presentation and showed a drawing of New Hall Road and retired the old hall road that runs directly behind the levee, and said they applied for their permit with the Corps of Engineers that day. So over a year later, they finally got their permit on August 1st. In July twenty seventeen, Councilman Tim Bodier met with Pierce Wood to discuss providing the information the Corps needed to complete their permit. Wood Materials provided the information and the court, that the Corps needed and then finally the permit for their, called Phase Two, which runs along the river, was issued on August the first, twenty seventeen. And the mayor worked with the Corps of Engineers and once they did get all their information, then they started that. Permit only. Phase Two is the construction along the river of the new Hall Road so they can retire the one that runs directly behind the levee. On August eleventh, twenty sixteen, over a year ago, New Orleans City Business article, one of the owners of Wood Materials, Sarah Woodham, stated, "It should take about six weeks to complete the new Hall Road." Now, from August the first to where we are now, September the twenty-first, that's seven weeks. Nothing's been done on the new Hall Road. Now, something's been done going back to the Hall Road, they have a, they started concreting there and it's been seven weeks since Phase Two. So, still, no work has been started on their Phase Two. According to Sarah Woodham, the new Hall Road would be completed by now. Phase One started about six months ago, which is a concrete road from the levee to the back of their property along the river. And they, they still have at least five more concrete forms to lay and slabs to pour. And that's been six months they've been working on that. The tire wash station is still not installed. When, we need a timeline on this project. When will the work begin? Can you have just thirty seconds more?
Go ahead.
A motion of thirty seconds.
Motion.
Motion by Council Johnson, seconded by Ms. Hewitt, all in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? We have thirty seconds, but I'll dial it to them now.
Thank you. Now, when the, when will the work begin on Phase Two, which is a road along the river? And when will work begin on the part of Phase Two, is retiring the Hall Road that runs directly and parallel behind the levee? What is the projected completion date for both phases, Phase One and Phase Two of this project? And we need that from Wood Materials. And this is the, this is the layout of the property. And this is the Hall Road that they have between Bailey and Raven. And here is between Hickory and Bailey. This is the road that they projected to run on right here, this where the new project is, the Phase Two. And this is, already has something back there, so it shouldn't take much to get it going. This is started, they can start on this anytime. Nothing holding them up. They don't need to complete this thing running to the back. There's three other roads that they have to get to it.
You're done.
So, okay.
Okay, just wanted to make one quick comment, Mr. Ream, just so you, you know I've been in constant contact with Pierce and Stacy over there. I'm trying to, I guess, put it for lack of better words, talk to them like normal human beings. But since the case has gone to court and they have just gotten very formal with me, so I'm hoping that I can, you know, re-extend that olive branch to talking, you know, to talking back to them again. But for right now, they have just been incredibly formal and I am taking it as a hand, you know, and I'm waiting to see what happens with the, with the appellate court judgment. I would imagine if they lose, they're probably not gonna be very happy. But I just promise you that I will not continue, I will constantly continue to keep open communication and dialogue with them. It's gotten us pretty far so far.
I wanted to let them know that the citizens of Harahan are not very happy.
I let them know every time.
They are not good neighbors.
I let them know every time.
And they never have been good neighbors.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Evelyn Ream, three renpass. Thank you Attorney Gilbert Bures for the great presentation you gave representing the city and its residents at the September sixth, twenty seventeen Wood Materials versus the City of Harahan court case. Thank you Mayor Tina Maselli, Councilman Tim Bodier, Councilman Sue Benton, and residents for attending court on September sixth, twenty seventeen. The Harahan Bachelor ordinance was put in place long ago to protect the Harahan residents. The City of Harahan, the City of Harahan Mayor Tina Maselli cited Wood Materials in February twenty sixteen for illegal compost and mulch operating against the Harahan Bachelor ordinance. Instead of paying for the citation and removing the facility off the Harahan Bachelor, Wood Materials filed lawsuit against the City of Harahan. November twenty ninth, twenty eleven, Google Maps shows only sand on Bachelor in Harahan and shows compost and mulch on Bachelor in Jefferson Parish. November twenty ninth, twenty eleven to February twenty sixteen is less than five years on the Harahan Bachelor. Besides the fact that Wood Materials is hiding the compost and mulch facility behind the levee and trees and out of public view. Wood Materials is suing the City of Harahan to try to keep what they have always known in their own hearts is against the Harahan Bachelor law. That is definitely not being a good neighbor. Wood Materials should want to be a good neighbor and show kindness and respect to the City of Harahan and its large residential community. Three judges did not make a rule from the bench yet. The City of Harahan is waiting on their decision. We emailed y'all two, we emailed y'all two aerial photos today, counsel and everybody else there. First aerial photo is on August the fourth, twenty seventeen, showing DIR long bed dump truck dumping very large amounts of tree stump and rot root debris on the sand Hall Road along the river against the Harahan Bachelor law. Second aerial photo is on September fifteenth, twenty seventeen, showing large amounts of recent mulch piles on the Harahan Bachelor from DIR's trees, stumps and root debris. You can see how large and crowded the mulch, compost and tree dump area is getting. There has been a lot of obnoxious odors entering the residential area. Residents' sinus problems have increased. If you smell odors, file a complaint online. Type LDEQ complaint in your browser on your computer and fill out the required information or call DEQ at two-two-five-two-one-nine-three-six-four-zero to voice your complaint. If this facility is not stopped on the Harahan-
Need a minute?
Motion for one minute.
I have a motion for one more minute by Councilman Bodier. Seconded by Councilman Johnson. All in favor? Any opposed?
Because I don't like what that happens.
We have five gays, zero nays. One more minute, please.
If this facility is not stopped on the Harahan Bachelor, it could expand all the way to Raven Avenue near Imperial Woods. Harahan residents are praying for justice and victory. God is faithful and will bless the City of Harahan and its residents. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sharon Sagas Tumi and I live at twenty-one twenty-four Hickory Avenue. And I'm here tonight because I want to bring forth my concern and my frustration. This is the first time I've come to a Harahan city council meeting. However, it's not the first time that I've been in this room in the last couple of months. I've been in this room four other times to be, to attend a planning and zoning committee meeting because across the street from my property, there is a rezoning request to rezone residential property to commercial. And I'm not happy about it. So, we've come here, myself and some other residents, just to find out that the council couldn't meet. The committee, or whatever you want to call it, the planning and zoning committee, could not meet because they didn't have enough people here. So, to me, I don't understand how that can happen. If people say they're gonna be on this committee, then they should be here. Then I start hearing things, I see what's going on here tonight and my head's going crazy because this does not seem like a council that's running a city. This seems like a bunch of bickering teenagers or children that, and I'm starting to understand, maybe that's why this committee isn't meeting. So, I'm here because I'm frustrated. I don't understand why this can't be talked about. And I'm also concerned because there's a lot of commercial stuff going on in Harahan. I get it, you need commerce. But I also know that Harahan is a residential city. I've lived here for thirty years. I love the city. And if, if it continues to get commercialized, more and more people are gonna have to leave because they're not gonna be able to afford to live here. And I, I need to understand why this planning and zoning committee meeting keeps getting canceled. Why aren't the people here? Why aren't the people listening? This isn't the only request that's come up. There's been another request that comes up that's not being heard. So, the people who are placing these requests, I'm sure they're getting frustrated, but the people who are against it and want to have a stand and want to hear a, hear a voice, we're getting really frustrated. And then what concerns me is the people who are coming here and they're, it's canceled again, they're leaving. They're gonna quit coming. And so then what's gonna happen? Nobody's gonna be here to complain against it. I'm gonna be here because I care. I care about my city, I care about my street. And if, if it keeps getting commercialized, I'm gonna have to move. And I'm not gonna be able to live in Harahan anymore because I'm not gonna be able to afford to. So, I'm here asking y'all to please do whatever y'all have to do to get this planning and zoning committee under control to where people are here, to hear what people are saying and so they can vote. And so we can get through this and figure out, is it gonna be rezoned or is it not? You've got us sitting there on pins and needles trying to figure out what's going to happen. So, that's all I'm here for. Other, I'm sorry.
Can I have a motion for two more minutes?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Benton, all in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? We have five gays, zero nays. Two more minutes is granted.
Thank you. And I failed to mention that I walked around the neighborhood with one of my fellow neighbors. We walked around on Hickory and on Generous because it does affect the people in Generous as well. And I have signatures for approximately fifty residents who are also voters.
You said you were a door knocker.
Yes, and I've done that. And I, and everyone I've talked to just about is very frustrated also. They're like, because guess what? Before this, I was going around putting flyers on people's doors to tell them about these meetings. And they'd say, "Oh, yeah, I've been getting those flyers." And I've been saying, "Yeah, that's me." You know, because I want to keep people posted on this. And they're like, "Well, what's going on with that? I don't understand what's going on." So, I've explained it over and over and over again. I should have probably recorded it because I've said the same thing over and over again. So, people, I've got these signatures of people who don't want this to be rezoned. These are people who care. These are people who vote. So, they need to know they're being heard, just like I need to know that I'm being heard. And I need to, we need, myself, my neighbors, we need to know that somebody's gonna do something so there's a board here that can vote on these types of requests.
Is that a copy?
No, this is the original.
Okay. Do you mind, we'll take a, soon take a short recess and get a copy?
Sure.
And what's your address again, I'm sorry?
Twenty-one twenty-four. I live across the street from the Harahan Christian Church, or Haran, not Christian, I'm sorry, Harahan Church of Christ. And the property right next door to that, which is owned by the Maronies, is being requested to be changed from residential to C-two, commercial, for the sole purpose of building a strip mall. And believe me, the last thing we need in that area is another strip mall. I have driven around a half-mile radius from that, from that property with my husband driving and me writing down names of all the places. And I have though, I have a list if anybody's interested. I have a list of all the businesses here. There are fifty-five commercial locations. Some of these are offices, some are restaurants, some are bars, some are nail salons. I could go on and on. Fifty-five commercial locations within a half-mile radius. What else do we need? This is gonna be over-commercialized. We've gotta stop. But if nobody cares and nobody's gonna come and nobody's gonna participate, I don't know what's gonna happen. And it's frustrating. Like I said, this is my first meeting I've come to and I don't really want to have to come back to another one. Okay? So, but I'm sure I'm gonna have to because I, from what I understand, after it goes through the planning meeting, it has to come here again. So, I guess I'll be back here again. And I'll continue talking. I'll come up here again if I have to. Because I'm gonna give it everything I have to. And then if it's voted that it's gonna be commercialized, I'll put my house up for sale. That's all I have to do. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for your advocacy also.
Jason Brusich, seventy-two oh four Stoneley. I hope to come up with a better tone today than, than generally. I do always sit up in the back and say, "Oh, my God, what did I just hear?" So, and that happened again. But this time I want to say, "I have an idea." And I heard Dana Hewitt just a minute ago, well, a little bit more than a minute, say, "You're about solutions." I was very happy to hear that and I want to say thank you for that because it sparked an idea. For Tim Walker, our chief of police, how's this for an idea? Nothing in his budget and no ordinance that I've seen says that his budget is restricted. So, everyone wants to keep arguing the Doyle decision versus other decisions versus this versus that. Fine, how's about an ordinance and I will help you guys write it? That specifies it's not a restricted budget. That he can utilize the line item system, the line item format as guidance to the administration, but that his budget is not restricted. That'll allow him to spend money how he needs to in satisfaction of what he has to have to keep us safe. How's that for an idea? Is that something that maybe we could all get behind?
Yes.
I would hope so. And now we get to the part where I said, "Oh, my God, what did I just hear?" I heard the mayor specifically say that we have to follow the law. In fact, let me see if I chotted it down here. Yeah, we have to follow the law, that's exactly what she said. I wrote it down. Which causes me to wonder if we must have an ordinance before we can spend a dime. And I think I've heard that about seven times tonight at least. How are we spending money on Ms. Lulu? Hundred and forty thousand dollars and I know that's more than her budget line. How are we spending money on her? We have to follow the law, right? And how is it the chief has to get his eleven thousand dollars under state statute? We have to follow the law, but we ain't gonna give him his eleven thousand dollars. How you figure? So, and I'm gonna try not to, you know, stay up here much longer. I came up here with a solution and two big questions. If we have to follow the law, don't we have to follow all of them? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Eddie Gregory, three-six-six East Avenue. I got a few simple things. There was a repair done on our street on Marquette in between East and West. Is that temporary?
I'm hoping it is. We have an order-
It's absolutely got to be because it's failing already.
I agree.
It was repaired yesterday.
I agree.
Okay.
That's why we put up an ordinance to move capital funds. It's to, in order to do that entire section, sir, it's gonna cost three hundred thousand dollars. The street acts as part of the drainage system, so it has to be done very carefully.
Okay, I do, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I know everybody said that, but once the street was torn off, I mean, we asked for a long time to get that done and we talked to, you know, and we talked to Councilman Bodier and Mr. Carlo. And the next day it was torn off and they put rocks on. Now, that sat that way for a couple of weeks and no water, no nothing. So, it doesn't seem like anything's leaking underneath that. I'm not a civil engineer, but I, I can tell you that's what we see. They put this piece on there. Look, something, something's better than nothing, so granted, I'm happy about that. As long as that's not gonna stay like that, because one day, I mean, twenty-four hours and it's failing, so.
And what, that's what we were talking about in the beginning also is that I did meet with Councilman Johnson to elicit his help and his input-
Okay.
-to see if we can conquer that whole area for you to fix those-
That's the only problem I see is right, right by my driveway. And, and look, and one other thing, and I mean, you know, everybody's covered it. Man, why, Mayor, I gotta ask you directly. Why are you not, can you stop writing and pay attention to me, please?
I'm, I'm trying to take my notes so I can make sure I get back to it. Okay.
Oh, no, this is easy. This is really easy. This is just simple civility. Why on earth, every, I've been to two council meetings, right? And just so you know, I'm not gonna go away, I'm coming every time now. All right, so, why are you not working with our police chief and find common ground?
I am working with the police chief.
It doesn't seem that way. It seems like he's pissed you off some kind of way and you're trying to piss him off some kind of way.
No.
Well, I guarantee everybody in this room believes that. And I'd be willing to bet everybody but you and a couple people up here believe that. And listen, I'm not trying to be rude, I'm not trying, I'm just telling you, it's ridiculous. I mean, they say, look, I got kids. Y'all are acting like kids. You're the leader? Lead.
Yes.
Get there and get your police chief. We want to be safe, right? You can't give me a good reason why our policemen make less than everybody else in the state.
I came in, the first thing, sir, Mr. Gregory, is I said, "How about, let's see," because the police chief made some very simple requests.
Right.
He said, "Guess what? This health care plan is way too expensive. It takes so much money in order for our police to put their families on the insurance." So, you know what I did? I said, "Okay." So, he was on my transition team. I said, "Let's go shop it." We shopped it, we did it and we lowered it so that there was more money. But you know what I got in return? People were unhappy because it was a different health insurance. At no time did I ever feel the support to say, you know, "Look, the police chief asked for it." But you know what? That's okay, I did it. Then the police chief says, "You know what? I need to change the way we pay so that we can have better hours and better patrols." And I said, "You know what, police chief? I believe you. Whatever you think you need to do." But we both walked into a horrible situation with the deficit, overspending and not a lot of mon, hardly any money. So, I said, "You know what? That's your priority." So, we did the health insurance, we did the hours, the schedule that he needs. And then the next year, I said, "You know what? How about this year, we've got some push? Let's look at doing some pay raises." But that wasn't his choice to do. He's, that's where we go. But we also have-
Wait, I said, I don't understand what you just said.
That wasn't what he chose to, to do. There were other priorities maybe he felt that he needed to do. And that's good, he articulated his needs and the council changed it. Quite frankly, I only do a proposed budget. What happens with the council and how they change and what they do is basically, that's, that's for the council. It's not, it's not for me. All I do is set the stage with the proposed budget.
So, look, I just, I try to simplify things as much as I possibly can, all right? So, I'm just, you know, like the gentleman before me said, you said you want-
I usually try not to talk back during, address the council, I'm sorry.
No, 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 but you, but you said that you want to put-
If I interrupted you and I lost your time.
That's all right. Can I have a couple more minutes?
Sure, I have a motion to give two more minutes. I have a motion by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Hewitt, all in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? We have five gays, zero nays. Two more minutes. Please continue, Mr. Gregory.
So, look, it, you know, like I said, I want to simplify things, all right? So, you said you want the police department to have what they need, is that correct?
Yes, I want the fire to-
Do you have what you need?
I want the fire to have it.
So, then please do whatever you gotta do to get with him So then please do whatever you got to do to get with him and stop bickering in these meetings and work together and make it happen.
And Mr. Gregory, we've got some really hard decisions to make. And you know, if you want to come, maybe we'll put together a citizens' meeting, you know, and talk about it and say, let's get a small group and say, okay, we have needs here, 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 and here. This is the money that we take in. What, what is your best idea?
I would love to do that.
Yeah.
I would absolutely love to do that.
So, I, we'll make an appointment next week, and we'll start thinking about how we could do it.
I believe you have my wife's phone, I'm going to call her.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right.
And one other thing, now, I just want to ask, the city accountant, Lulu, is that correct? Is that true that she's making three times what is allocated?
Yes.
Is that true, ma'am? Are you making three times what's allocated to you?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
So how is that possible?
We're not sure.
And, and look, and, and just out of curiosity, and look, I'm not trying to pick a fight or anything, if you're getting paid three times what you're supposed to be getting paid, how do you show up to a council meeting woefully unprepared?
I, I'm going to object to disparaging.
I'm just asking. That's not disparaging. I'm asking, how does she not have a computer with the data in front of her? People ask a question, she can't answer.
To address the council, so...
Well, I'm just saying, she can't...
We're not going to disparage.
You're a later man, buddy. You're done. You, you...
I, I'm not trying, but, but...
I know how we feel, two and a half years...
How is that not a reasonable question? Mayor, seriously, okay, so, all right, I'm going to address you, Mayor. How is that not a reasonable question?
We're going to meet next week. Yes?
Well, yeah, but I'd like to know. I mean, I think it should be on record in front of everybody, right? Why is, if you get, you know, if somebody paid me three times what I'm supposed to be getting paid, they would expect me to be A.J. squared away on the spot. Period. End of story. And really, quite funny, you know?
I might need a city attorney opinion, and I'll be seeking one probably. Thanks. We've got some issues that we need to deal with.
Oh, obviously.
I know. I know. Thanks. As a boy, you got to laugh, you know?
Okay, wait, hold on. He's got, wait, wait, wait. He's got to step down. He's had his time expire too.
Well, did it, did the second time expire?
Well, oh, wow, look, look, look. It's 59, wait, no, I'm wrong.
No, no, I was just, I'm just curious.
59 seconds.
You know, you said the city attorney opinion on what? I'm sorry. I didn't understand, on what?
We'll meet next week, sir. I'm not going to, we're not, this is address the council. I don't want to get in a back and forth debate. Thank you.
It's just simple questions. It's not a debate. I'm just trying to...
You're done. I'm sorry. I hope your street gets fixed.
So what can I do to make sure my street gets fixed?
Yeah, well, I don't know.
Show up every Thursday?
Last nail in that coffin, buddy.
Hold her on that meeting, she promised.
No, no, I don't, look. See, I was much more calm this time.
Thank you, Mr. Eddie.
Thank you.
Y'all have a great evening. Thank you.
All right, can y'all end it from here?
Yes.
All right, Lonell Dubea, 250, we stab it. I hope you stab it, and Marquette doesn't get fixed. They drive fast enough, and we got the kids. They spare enough. This league of bumps and speed bumps. Ah, as far as our professionals, their pay and stuff, I used to be president of Level 53, all right? And on that, I served on the pension board and a lot of other boards. A lot of money I was over, $43 million. I had one of the six votes. We learned to trust our actuary we had, consultants, lawyers, and all that. They started out at one base fee. Every time we asked them a question, their pay went up. How come their salaries are higher perhaps? A lot of goofy questions I hear over and over all the time, you know? That's why reason costs go up. It's like getting in a taxicab. You put that meter down, that's it, you pay it. You know, think about it. Listen to the questions. We need to know this, we need to know this. Problem is, they ask the questions after they pass something. So now they need the questions again. All right? I'm not pointing fingers at anybody. They know where they are. All right? Lot of, I'm not going to say anymore about it. I'm just talking to consulting people that I'm not going to. You know, that's one reason I pay, gets way, way up high. And that's it. Thank you all.
I'm Herb Swallow, 226 Carroll Drive in Harahan. The property at the corner of my street on Jefferson Highway, we talked about the zoning boards. I've been here five times. I've been to four different zoning board, board meetings, and never had a meeting finished yet. And I've been, I've come to three different council meetings, and I'm still getting the same, same answers. So we need to get a zoning board. If you've got some members on there that don't show up, get them out off, off on the street, let them go do whatever they do. But you need to get somebody on the zoning board that's going to show up at the meetings and be here when a citizen needs it. And that's, that deals for everybody. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, you said you want to answer questions.
My Cox Cable, are you going to sign the contract? It's about $400 a month additional. It's only for three months. You said bring it up to the council at October meeting. They vote over it in November. It'll only be good for one month. I need it now. Or are you going to sign the contract?
I don't know what's in the line item, Tim, and to, to see what we have and what's allowed.
I'm signing a contract tomorrow. I'll submit the bills. Y'all have no problem submitting bills for payment out of the police department budget